As you know, it's a proposal to replace a critical piece of infrastructure located on an existing utility site at the corner of Kerr Road and Spring Road. We filed our application back in August of 2018. It's been reviewed by several departments, municipal agencies, and this board many times over that year and a half. Over that period, we've received and addressed several comments and have gone through a pretty deliberate process. Some of those comments related to our site plan application, some of them not. But nonetheless, we've tried to be responsive during this process. We hope we have in furtherance of working with this group and the community. We submitted a substantial amount of information over this period in response to those comments, and we're not going to go through every piece of information we've submitted to you so far, but we are going to give you a overview and a presentation on the details of the site plan application. And I'd like to emphasize that that's the purpose of us being here tonight is to present that site plan application and the materials that we've submitted in support of that application, as well as to sit and listen to public comment. An important premise that we like to start from with this proposal is the overall objective that we try to acknowledge, which is we're trying to enable Central Hudson to be able to continue to maintain reliable electric service in the community. You may recall over this process that Central Hudson has went back and even before filing, worked on modifying their application, trying to present something that we thought would be responsive to the initial preliminary comments we had heard. And then after months in the process, we spent a few more months going back and reanalyzing and trying to modify the application to address some of those comments going forward. Greg will walk through that a little bit tonight. We believe the layout that we've shown tonight and through this process does do a decent job of balancing the objectives and the needs of the utility while being able to safely and reliably deliver electricity, but also to be responsive to the comments we've heard. We understand there may be comments that you received during this process of the public hearing that are about technical utility questions and other non-site plan-related issues, but we -- and we will get into some of that tonight from an informational perspective. But again, we're going to try to focus on our site plan and its compliance with your local code.
All right? Thank you. Good evening. Again, my name is Brian Demischio, project manager at Central Hudson, and I'll go right into the presentation. So we're here tonight to foundationally enable the project. Our primary objective with our site plan application is to enable Central Hudson to safely and reliably continue the delivery of electric service to the community that it serves. And that includes both the town of Poughkeepsie, through which the NAPS Corner substation serves, but also the greater community as a result of the interconnected electric network that is served through other substations and the interconnections of transmission lines, which include other substations in the town of Poughkeepsie, which I'll talk about and demonstrate. The project that you have, the site plan application, is not dependent on or reliant on other infrastructure projects that Central Hudson may be working on in terms of design, review, in construction. This site plan application is of its own accord. It is not dependent on other projects. Central Hudson must, as we've indicated in prior filings and at this planning board meetings, we must replace existing outdated substation equipment with a modernized substation. We need it to be poised for future service, decades of safe and dependable service for the community. Major substation equipment within the NAPS Corner substation is age-related, experiencing age-related deterioration and obsolescence. And that applies to both what we see above grade as well as what we don't see, which is below grade, cable and conduits, wiring, manholes, pole boxes, et cetera. There are signs of ongoing and gradual deterioration of major pieces of equipment. This raises concerns, obviously, for equipment longevity and reliability, and we need to head that off before it becomes a bigger problem. In addition, much of the equipment is overcrowded, especially below grade, due to many, many decades of equipment modifications and upgrades and replacements. It is at capacity. You'll recall that the NAPS Corner substation has served our community now for nearly 80 years. There truly is no opportunity at this point to substantively repair, upgrade, or replace major equipment in that substation due to age and obsolescence. Many of the critical pieces of equipment are 50 to 60 years old, and some are older. Simply stated, we do need to replace that substation, and we need to replace it soon, now. I think we can all appreciate that, when we talked about almost 80 years of service, that the community that is served by the NAPS Corners substation today is far more robust, far more dynamic, and far more demanding as opposed to what that community resembled back in 1941, when the substation went in service, and again in 1953, when it was expanded. A lot has changed over those years, and our needs and our usage of electric has changed. Something that hasn't changed, though, over these many decades is the nearly seven-acre parcel or property delineation that contains the NAPS Corner substation and the corresponding transmission and distribution infrastructure. It's fit for this purpose, and it's identified for this purpose in town code. As you can understand, it's not an easy task to replace a substation like NAPS Corners due to the number of years, decades, it's been in service. It's also our obligation to make sure that we minimize service interruptions for the existing infrastructure and the existing community. NAPS Corners substation provides electric service to several thousand customer accounts, and this includes industrial, commercial, and of course, many residential customers. Engineering design and standards practices of decades ago, when the NAPS Corner substation was installed, have evolved and improved over time to where we are today. Today's technology, today's computer-based tools, they didn't exist in 1941 for infrastructure design. So we're very fortunate to have those enhancements and to have those tools and to have engineering staff to utilize those tools to maximum ability to facilitate safe, reliable, robust infrastructure upgrades and replacements like the NAPS Corner substation. Accordingly, replacing the NAPS Corner substation does require acknowledgement and consideration of the various technical and engineering factors that are used in determining sighting options. That's a critical piece. Designing a substation today and attaching utility-grade infrastructure requires adherence to voluminous volumes of engineering and safety references, guidelines, manuals, codes, and of course, sound engineering practice for the prevailing conditions. No two conditions are ever alike. NAPS Corners is different from Manchester Substation, which is different from Spackenkill Substation. Every station, every area is unique, and it has its own set of conditions that require unique application and engineering consideration. Respectfully, engineering design doesn't lend itself to a cookbook approach. Although there are references and guidelines and codes and manuals, it does require independent thinking in terms of examination of the prevailing conditions, evaluation of the options, prudent analysis of safety and risk factors, and of course, critical thinking to ensure that the totality of the electric system is not compromised. One example, simply just one example, is attachment deflection angle, design criteria for transmission lines. This is only one consideration in the overall design and implementation of a substation, which has to also tie into transmission line design. A reference to that can be found in the American Society of Civil Engineer, ACSE Manual and Reports on Engineering Practices. There are many, many other design criteria, which we have identified and spelled out in prior filings for this planning board. It would take some time to go through those, and there are a lot, but that was just one. Now, it may not be readily apparent, but it's not uncommon for a substation to be located near or nestled within the areas that they serve. We are all served by a distribution circuit, and every circuit is tied back to a particular substation. You might be fed off of the NAPS Corner substation, perhaps the Spackenkill substation, Inwood Avenue, Manchester. These are all Town of Poughkeepsie substations. Operationally speaking, a substation provides a foundational service of stepping down transmission level voltage to a distribution level voltage. It's a handoff. It's a conversion. It allows those distribution voltages through distribution circuits to provide service to the local customer base. And accordingly, it is common to have a substation situated or reside within residential areas with proximity. They must deliver that electricity at lower voltages to nearby homes, schools, businesses, et cetera. Substations consist of various equipment, and very much, very similar across substations, you'll find the same equipment, but what does change over time is the design, because equipment design changes over time. It gets better. It gets improved, and we have new tools to be able to design substations. Transformers, circuit breakers, these are things you're familiar with through our prior discussions, switches, a control building, which very much, by today's standard, resembles a backyard shed. Back in the day, they didn't have those. Everything was outdoor. All the equipment was outdoor, and now everything is centrally located and kept much smaller in design. Notably, the substations by today's standards, and when you look through the other substations in Town of Poughkeepsie, they don't have large buildings located on them. There are no permanent employees assigned to them. They're passive, unoccupied facilities. There's no office or retail space. There's no demand for water. There's no need for water. There's no need for sewer. And in fact, these are low-impact units when it comes to customer contact or customer What I'd like to display, and I have two boards that go hand in hand. The first one, you have --
Please just make sure to use the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me there?
Just give it a second.
There it goes. We're on. Thank you. Thank you, Greg. The second one will be this guy right there. I'm not ready for that yet. Thank you. Again, this is a diagram that was provided to the planning board in a prior filing. This is an elevation rendering of the proposed NAPS Corner substation, and the view that you're looking at here is identified as the front view looking north. So this is as if I'm standing in the driveway that would, the south driveway off of Kerr Road. And it shows 150-foot width here, fence line around here. What you see here is the control building. What I described is what by today's standards looks like a backyard shed. It's about 13 feet high. Dimensionally, it's about 25 by 50 feet. This is a view of a transformer. That one here happens to be the, one of the, one of two, 115 to 138 step downs for distribution transformer, approximately 18 and a half feet high. You have a lightning arrester here, another lightning arrester. This is the, where the dead end ties in here with transmission line with lightning arrester. Just to give you a little bit of imagery, and this side view here is looking westward, as if I were standing in the corridor looking toward Kerr Road. This would be the 69 KV, this 115 to 69 KV transformer. Again, lightning arresters with dead end and the lightning mast here, some bus work, transformer, and another dead end structure over here surrounded with the fence line. If you think about the NAPS Corner substation today as we have it, you can see that there is far less bus work, right? Not nearly as much of that superstructure as would be here present. Everything is smaller. It is more compact. It is streamlined, and it, as a reference, you can see that some of the surrounding, what these surrounding trees look like in terms of typical existing tree height between 50 and 70 feet high gives you a little bit of a reference to the equipment in the substation. And if we, sorry, if we kind of step over now to this diagram, this drawing, I'm sorry, this picture, this is the Spackenkill substation. And now to cross-reference what we just looked at there, this would be the control building, very similar to what we would have at NAPS Corners. Again, about 25 feet by about 50 feet, about 13 feet high. Dead end structures here for the transmission line with lightning arrester. Two transformers are shown here. There are two in the Spackenkill substation. They are 115 to 115 KV, step down to 138 KV for distribution, a lightning arrester, fence line around here, and you can see the surrounding tree line around that substation. So just wanted to try and correlate what you're seeing here dimensionally for NAPS Corners to a typical equipment of today's vintage. And Spackenkill now is about 10 years old. Okay. And I will be back up in a minute there, Greg.
So replacing the NAPS Corner substation, again, as I said, is needed to continue to safely and reliably provide electric service to the town for decades to come. Risk aversion is a critical part of our assessment. It has to be, especially for this type of infrastructure, because it is tied in, which I'll talk about in a few minutes, about the loop feed with other substations through the Town of Poughkeepsie, a very important part that we'll touch on. Central Hudson most definitely considers system risk and reliability as part of our decision-making, not only internally for projects, but of course, for getting those approved through the Public Service Commission for funding for projects like this. During the site plan application process, we did receive questions from the board and its consultant, STANTEC, as to whether Central Hudson could install the substation as a replacement in the existing footprint. While this wasn't part of our site plan application that we submitted, I want you to know that we did work diligently to respond to that and to research every aspect that we felt was in fulfillment of giving you all the information that we could possibly provide. Prior to filing in 2018, and then again in 2018 and 2019 through this whole process that we have been here, we evaluated this concept again. It was, in fact, the very first concept that we looked at, the first option that we looked at as part of our design to be able to replace the substation. It was important to us to make sure that we have all the information in front of you as we reviewed previously to the filing, to make sure that you have everything that you need to be comfortable, that our site plan application is the best and correct approach. We documented this recently, again, in our June and October submissions. And as part of that, it's important to note that we have obligations to meet that are separate from the site plan application process. New York State, of course, the Public Service Commission requires us to safely, adequately, and reliably install and complete our projects, and cost is a factor as well. We have to consider that. Greg Liberman of EDR, in his presentation, will discuss light and sound, but I'd like to address briefly EMF, electromagnetic fields. Central Hudson consulted with a third-party expert on EMF, and I'll just call electromagnetic fields, I'll refer to that as EMF. As previously documented in our February 2019 submission, EMFs are part of our environment. They're present in homes, businesses, wherever electricity is present, they're present here tonight by virtue of the electricity that we have in this office, in this space, through lighting in particular. But they're also present in cell phones. As one would expect, EMFs exist in electric lines, and they exist in substations, though a substation is not a primary driver of EMF. We had an EMF evaluation performed, a comprehensive evaluation, by a company, NV5, two registered professional engineers performed that evaluation and that study. They confirmed that both existing and predicted EMF levels at the property lines and on the right-of-way lines are substantially below the applicable regulatory standards. In fact, at both the existing and predicted levels, they are comparable to levels found on the property line and on the right-of-way line. They're comparable to household equipment that you, or appliances, that you would find, such as hair dryers, portable heaters, portable fans, electric stoves, very comparable to those sorts of numbers. I'd like to, in a couple of minutes, discuss the consequence of system risk and reliability in the context of constructing a new substation in the existing location. I have a diagram, a loop feed diagram, that I'd like to share with you and discuss system architecture and operation, and I think will help illustrate and solidify, crystallize the points that we have been trying to make a number of times in terms of radial feed and loop feed and what those issues are for Central Hudson and its customers. As I said before, we have a significant customer base here with the NAPS Corner substation, several thousand customer accounts, industrial, commercial, and residential. To replace the existing substation in its current location, we'd effectively have to build two substations, two new substations facilities on the same property, one of which would be located in the same location as the proposed replacement facility. There are some civil design concerns with this approach, which Greg Liberman will discuss in more detail in his portion of the presentation, but I will tell you that that approach, using a temporary substation and trying to build the existing footprint, would also double the construction period to approximately two years. And during that time, we would have significantly less redundancy and backup on our system, which I'll describe in a moment.
What I'd like to show you now is a loop feed diagram, what we call the mid-Duchess 115 KV loop. So this is a 115 KV line, and it has tie points, end tie points, both at the Pleasant Valley substation in Pleasant Valley and at the North Chelsea substation in the Town of Wappinger. Can you see that okay? Okay. The line, the 115 line, has a bidirectional feed, meaning it has 115 KV voltage that is supplied both from the North Chelsea substation looking this way and from the Pleasant Valley substation looking this way. So think of that as a bidirectional feed. Think of it as, and before I use an example, we also have several substations that are tied into this line. Within the Town of Poughkeepsie, we have the Manchester substation, Spackenkill substation, NAPS Corners, Barnegat substation, and Sandok substation. So they're connected to and they're fed from and through that 115 KV loop. If you think about a string of holiday lights, and think about each light being one of those substations, and think about a plug on each one of those light, on each end of that string. You plug in here, and you plug in here, and each light here would be one of those substations. So what we're having, by that example, as I'm showing, is we have bidirectional feed in both ways, so that if we unplugged or lost our feed from, say, the North Chelsea substation, we still have redundancy. Because of redundancy and backup, we have a feed from the Pleasant Valley through the continuation of the whole 115 line, and vice versa. If we unplugged on the Pleasant Valley end and fed through here, we would still have a feed there, okay? But we're plugged in on both ends, and that gives us redundancy backup, very important for a 115 line, especially this line, the mid-Duchess line. Now, we have a total of 20, a little over 27,000 accounts that are fed total off of those five substations, metered accounts. So that's a fairly large number. What we are proposing to do by replacing the substation is if we are going to consider replacing the NAPS Corner substation with a temporary substation and rebuilding off of that existing footprint, first thing we have to do is we have to be able to, we have to be able to break the connection. We have to break that loop feed, okay? And this goes also for replacing the substation with the site plan application that we have in front of you, but there's a big difference between both approaches, which I'll explain to you. When we break the loop here, because we have to replace that substation, again, through our site plan application or through the temporary, we have to break the loop, and what happens is we no longer have a loop feed that is feeding both ways, from North Chelsea all the way up to Pleasant Valley and vice versa. What we have created are two radial feeds, two radial feeds. One radial feed is from North Chelsea up to NAPS Corners, where we have opened up or severed the loop, and the other radial feed is from Pleasant Valley to NAPS Corners, to that same point. So we have two separate lines, if you will, with one-way feeds. It's a very delicate and a very important point that I make here, is that when that is open, when we are working on NAPS Corners to replace it, and we have this loop feed open, we have to be very concerned about any other damage that could occur to the 115 KV line that could create a stranded customer base without lights. And what do I mean by that? We have storms, as we all know. We've experienced storms. I've been with Central Hudson for almost 33 years, and I've worked many, many storms, major storms, in all points of our territory. It is not uncommon. It has happened, and it can always happen again. We have a storm come through, and it knocks out our transmission line, perhaps down here, at the same time that we're working on NAPS Corners. If we have this open here, and we have a storm roll through that takes our line out, we have now stranded all of these customers. There's no power coming this way. There's no power coming this way. We've just lost this whole customer base. They're no longer fed. It's broken on both ends. In this case, what we would, well, you'd have to stop work on NAPS Corners, put the loop feed or close in the 115 line there so we can restore these customers to pick them up and then go back and fix this, so we can put everything back in. And then we go back to work again, right? Because we have to still work on the NAPS Corner substation. Now, I will tell you that the number of iterations that we would need to make here at NAPS Corners using a temporary substation is five times more, five times more iterations than what we would be doing with our current site plan application in front of you. The total cumulative time duration of the break of the loop to go radial, also about five times more than the site plan application we have in front of you. The time to construct a NAPS Corner substation on the existing footprint using a temporary substation would be about twice the duration, or two years, compared to the site plan application we have in front of you. And lastly, the cost would also be about double, twice the cost of the application that we have in front of you to build the substation that we have designed. So we have a number of significant items that I hope are resonating. I hope that this loop feed, radial feed, isn't too tough to get, because I'm trying to show you that in relationship to the temporary versus the site plan application, we have a far better capability to maintain system reliability and decrease risk, not just for the customers here at NAPS Corners, but for all of the customers fed on the 115 KV loop.
So in summary, I hope that my description here and my other comments have shown that Central Hudson has taken a very comprehensive, very critical, and a very serious approach to creating and providing the site plan application that we have in front of you. to creating and providing the site plan application that we have in front of you. I hope that we have addressed the issues that we are very concerned about with system risk and reliability and service for not just the local community from Naps Corners, but the global community that we are served off of here. We're extremely confident that the site plan application that we have in front of you is the right application, that it's the best application. We've done everything we can to hopefully show that to you. The substation meets the town's site plan standards. It also meets Central Hudson's utility objectives. It complies with New York State's imposed mandates, and it does minimize the risk of service interruptions. And with that point, I'd like to turn my presentation over to Greg Lieberman.
Brian? So I think Brian has done a very good job of describing the system and some of the maybe more electrical components. And at the end of the day, I think one of the things we're seeing here is this is a site plan application with site plan decisions that have been made by folks within Central Hudson and with environmental design and research. And I think we'll just take a few minutes and talk through some of these site plan-related issues, many of which we've already talked through here in some form or another. But I think it's worth picking up on a couple of themes that are in the record, some new recent changes that we talked about last time, but just put a little bit of a finer point on some of these topics. So with respect to this project, it's a seven-acre site. This is, just to orient everybody, this is Kerr Road, this is Spring Road, this is the property, this is the proposed substation location, this is where the existing substation is today. And just for context, this is a picture looking from the intersection. What Brian, I think, did a good job of explaining is the differences in technology from where we are here to where modern substations are going. They have a much lower profile, the equipment is much thinner. This is the bus work that's commonly referred to. That's what the view is there today. That's what's going to come out as part of the decommissioning of this existing substation after this current substation is constructed. And I want to take a minute and just talk about the existing substation fence line and perhaps demystify some of the topics that I think came up last week. This isn't two substations. The transformers that are in the existing substation are going into the replacement substation location. This area will be decommissioned, and there will be nothing in there. There will be remaining some 69 KV equipment that's needed to help facilitate existing transmission infrastructure. If this equipment were moved into the replacement substation, it would result in roughly a 40% increase in the size of this substation to make it all fit, which requires additional clearing, additional grading, additional disturbance. So therefore, because this is already there, and it's a lower profile, this equipment does not look like that equipment. It's much shorter. It's actually not even visible. You can see the tree line, which will remain. Because it's low profile, because of the ability to keep this substation smaller and more compact, that's why that area, that's why this is being proposed to remain. Within this open area, that won't be used for storage, that won't be used for transformers, it will be used for short-term coordination and recovery during the storms that Brian alluded to. When storms happen, when distribution issues happen, this becomes a centralized location for gathering, for stockpiling, for crews to meet, to fix issues that may be occurring in this locality. So we see it as a tremendous asset to the community, that this space becomes available from a storm resiliency standpoint. Shifting to the proposed substation, this is situated centrally within the site. There are a few things I just want to point out. There's been a lot of refinements to this design, going back to the original filing, but even on more recent filings with respect to stormwater infrastructure and drainage. All the drainage components are located on the Central Hudson property, so that there's no need for an agreement with the town. And one of the things I just want to note for the board and for folks here, the stormwater management at this site is unique, as it is for any substation or any land development, with the current speedies permits, with dealing with MS4 requirements. We are over an acre, and we do have new areas of impervious surface that need to be treated in accordance with the Stormwater Management Design Manual. Typically, those are done through surface-laid best management practices, detention ponds, buyer retention facilities. Here, we are proposing an alternative porous stone cross-section that the DEC has approved for use at substations. And what that means is we're taking advantage of the void space within the stones within the actual footprint, so that runoff and stormwater that lands on the substation can be housed within that void space and infiltrated into the ground. And that's unique in a couple of ways. First, it's a very green infrastructure practice, that we're not creating more runoff, and we certainly want to maintain our zoning thresholds of the 15% impervious cover, so we're there. But also, it doesn't, it eliminates the need for additional grading, additional clearing, additional stormwater facilities. And that's an asset that we think is helpful, considering how much land we're able to preserve, and how much wooded buff we're able to preserve, and how much wooded buff we're able to enhance. So that's something I just want folks to be mindful of, and that's also relevant if, when you look to, if there was a request to shift this further south, which is something we've discussed, and to Brian's point about replacing in place and kind would require some level of, you know, new substation. If anywhere in this area were slated for that, you run into real problems from a civil engineering perspective, because there's a ridge line that runs through here. And many of you have walked this with us, and you can see, it kind of goes up and then it drops down. Well, with this stormwater management practices, we're going for infiltration, and we need to be in and want to be in the native soil material, as opposed to having the substation sticking out of the ground at the corners, which is problematic from a drainage perspective, because substations by nature are flat, they're not stepped. So there are some real considerations from a civil engineering perspective that have gone into this proposed layout. I'd like to take a minute, too, and just remind folks, when we had originally filed in August, we were far closer to the northern property line. So this idea of shifting south has, was identified early on from the board, and there was a very heavy response among Central Hudson to evaluate that and come back with an updated plan. In fact, with the shift that was filed in, I believe it was filed in February of 2019, we increased the distance between the substation fence line and the northern property boundary by over 50 feet, by 53 and a half feet, and also by the eastern boundary by over 13 feet, thereby increasing the total distance between the new substation fence line and the property line from 165 to over 220 feet. In doing this, not only did it just create a physical separation, but it actually preserved a fairly sizable, mature wooded area that would remain and allowed for space to install additional landscape plantings, particularly evergreen trees to accommodate a leaf-off scenario, to further screen and block views from the northern properties. This combination of the shift, the combination of the additional plantings that installed, along with dropping the substation finished floor elevation to 13 feet below the adjacent properties, in parallel with the lower-profile substation design that Brian alluded to earlier, really limits, if not avoids, the visual impacts from the northern properties. It screens it substantially in a leaf-off condition, as identified in the simulations that have been provided. In addition, actually, I'll take a quick minute to walk through, there's over, I think there are 170 plants that have been added to this landscaping plan, a mixture of evergreen trees, shrubs, native plants, ornamentals. And it's not just on this northern border. They were installed within an existing cleared distribution corridor. They were installed along the western edge, along Kerr, and in fact, a retaining wall was proposed as part of the shift. We had to add a retaining wall to make this viable. We could have stopped the retaining wall midway. The retaining wall was actually made longer, additional costs, but in doing so, created a higher planting bed for these trees here to further provide screening from Kerr Road. And I will just show the board, this is not new, this is, was submitted. This is the view looking south from Kerr. You can see the evergreen trees being installed in that cavity that exists today. You can look down the existing view, there was an old distribution conduit through there. So by putting these plants in that void space, and also setting them closer to the viewer, we're able to substantially screen the views of the substation. And you can see, well, there are spots where it is visible. Visibility in and of itself is, this is wispy, tall, thin components that will blend in to the scenario, particularly during a leaf-on situation. But this really shows the efforts that have been made to screen the views. When viewed from the south, you'll see the bus work has been removed, that southern driveway on Kerr has been removed and infilled with shrubs. There's a very robust planting plan running along Kerr Road and going up the topography that's out there on the edge of Kerr, providing additional screening. The substation is set back. Oh, thank you, Anthony. Yeah, so this is that bus work that we showed earlier that's coming out. You can see here, these trees are remaining. Overall, the view from this end is actually an improvement. There's less clutter, there's less electrical infrastructure. So by citing it in this location and tucking it a little bit more central and providing the enhanced landscaping that's been provided, every efforts have been made to avoid impacts both locally, as well as within the community. We looked at the view shed out to, I think, a mile radius, and that's been provided in the information. We looked at sensitive sites, we photo documented pictures during leaf-on conditions, and overall, the changes here, particularly in light of the lack of lighting, feel there's been a significant impact avoidance and/or to the maximum of things practicable with respect to visual. I'll take a few minutes also and talk through transportation. There are two driveways with the existing substation, one on Spring, one on Kerr. The one on Spring will remain. The one on Kerr will be removed, as we discussed. The two new proposed driveways are set back from the intersection at Spring and Kerr, improving site distances, improving sightlines from a traffic safety standpoint. The northern driveway is situated well over 200 feet from the next intersection and over 140 feet from the nearest residential driveway. And it's just worth noting here, and it's in the information, this site does not generate traffic. This is a passive use. It's not staffed, it's not manned. There will be traffic coming in and out of these driveways for maintenance, for observation, but this is not a Starbucks, this is not a drive-thru. So therefore, we don't anticipate there would be a traffic effect resulting from this project. The two driveways, as described in the information provided, are required and really a necessity to facilitate construction and operation of this facility, and to also maintain access to the broader transmission right-of-way. We understand there have been some comments about particularly the northern driveway, and I don't think they were from a traffic standpoint, more from a visual standpoint, with the potential for residential properties existing and proposed on the other side of Kerr. And we went back and looked at this driveway in the most recent submittal and came up with an alternative that actually ramped down the width of that apron, almost 40%, and made it a right-hand in and a right-hand out. We looked at the turning radii to make sure everything would work. And really, what that means is this opening, when viewed from across the street, has been narrowed significantly. And this kind of bulbous end was added with additional shrubs, so that direct sightlines are now hindered and directly blocked. And if you look, where the substation equipment is, is actually set south of the access road, inside the fence line, blocked by this double row of evergreens. So there's a layered effect to blocking views going down that northern driveway, which we think gets at the root of what some of the comments were. So we feel we've been able to, by some of those physical changes, address the concerns of the board. Lastly, I'll speak to lighting and sound. With respect to lights, the current substation, built in the 1940s, different technology, is lit 24 hours a day. By going to a more efficient design, by using more, the increase in computer communications allows these to be managed in a more proactive way, where it does not need to be lit 24 hours a day, and it won't be lit 24 hours a day. It's actually been committed to in the application that it won't be lit at all. There will be lights, and we've provided the specs, and we've provided the photometrics to the board, and they'll only be on during nighttime emergencies, when there's a reason to go in and have, and safety is a concern and we have to do a fix, unless there's, or if there's an atypical situation of vandalism or safety. But in general, the lights will be off. And when the lights are on, we ran the photometrics, and we still maintain the 0.0-foot candles at the adjacent neighbors because of where we situated this, so far back from the property line, and because we've maintained all that vegetation. So even from a lighting perspective, even when they are on, or when they have to be on, we're still code compliant. And lastly, with respect from sound, the town code exempts from regulations sounds created by utilities. Nevertheless, Central Hudson did work with an acoustical company, Hush Acoustics, to perform an analysis, looking at town and DEC codes. And because equipment has improved so much, the transformers and the cooling equipment is actually, has a lower sound output than the equipment that's there today. So the highest predicted noise level from the new substation in an emergency condition is actually still well below DEC guidelines and the town's strictest code. So we feel from lighting and sound, we've, you know, provided, everything we need to be provided to demonstrate no impact.
I'm sure you'll be happy to hear that we're done. And at this point, we will likely sit and receive and listen to comments, subject to the chairman saying that's okay. And, you know, I think the anticipation is we will listen to the comments tonight, as the board will, and not respond to them this evening, subject to, you know, some other questions that come up.
All right. Appreciate, since this is the first public hearing, I appreciate you going through it in some detail, explaining the loops, et cetera. Chris, is yours? Do you have anything first?
I'm going to defer to Lisa or Mike.
All right.
No, I have nothing that I need at this time.
All right, this is a public comment, so I move, we open the public comment for this.
Check.
Moved the second, it calls the question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5 to 0. Yep. I just want to remind everyone, we are opening a public hearing tonight. I know some neighbors had said they could not make it in the sent in letters, I appreciate the letters, and we will be adjourning it to a future meeting as well. So you'll have additional opportunities to comment. First up on the sign-in sheet is Bill Carlos.
I didn't see him before.
Next up, Phil Durasmo.
Phil, could you just, I'm sorry, since you're the first speaker, could you just turn that microphone on, or Carol will come over and do it for you. You got it? It just takes a second, and then it's good, should be good. Yes.
Good evening. My name is Phil Durasmo. I have been a resident of Duchess County for 52 years, the past 19 years owning and residing at Two Ronnie Lane, within the existing Country Club Estates. I just want to point out tonight, one comment that, I don't know if you noticed, that not one picture or rendering was provided that showed the view from the back of the properties on the most northern boundary. That's a little telling. As an owner of a property that will be the most affected by the planned substation's move, I fear that the move will prove to be a detriment upon the safety, privacy, and the appeal of the neighborhood in general. In simple and common sense terms, it's still too close. To begin, the planned 18-inch burn to plan a row of six-foot Norway spruce trees to obscure the substation is not enough to disregard all the aesthetic and safety concerns, such as the sight and lighting of electrical equipment, additional traffic now further into the development, which by the way, there is only one ingress and egress of that development, trucks operating and/or staging in the area, EMF, and the possibility of fire impingement, which has occurred at other Central Hudson substations. Not to mention the Not to mention the loss in home values that will most certainly occur, despite someone, an expert from Large Mont telling us different. All these factors will impact the neighborhood for the worse. The substation will now, more than ever, truly be a part of our beautiful neighborhood. That being said, why even try to move this facility if it would be the result? It is simple, cost-effectiveness. In order to save money on what we have been told are necessary upgrades, which I truly feel are necessary, Central Hudson has chosen to move to the flattest part of the property, which happens to be the closest to the residential community. They did just avoid the costs of moving earth, which they have previously stated they wish to avoid. However, anything can be done with time and money. And for a company whose parent brought a billion dollars down to the bottom line last year, that isn't a concern. Furthermore, I find it personally a little disappointing that Central Hudson would not let us know about the project, would not let us have known about the project until we received the letter on December 11th from the town informing us about tonight's public hearing. It was only at the inquest of neighbors who witnessed unusual activity on Central Hudson's property that the community was able to know about the project. This led to an informal meeting facilitated by our town councilman with Central Hudson that was really more of a sales and marketing pitch than anything. Their statements were either too vague or simply not accurate, especially discussing potential alternative sites. When we voiced our concerns, communications between the company and the residents were cut. While it may appear that Central Hudson's current plans have been created to appease the town and as such the residents, it's only because they led with an impossible demanding offer of having a natural tree buffer of 67 feet from our property lines. Then stated they were able to increase the buffer to 92 feet, and more recently to 145 feet, all while each proposal adding additional features to the project, such as another ingress and egress, and a compact road to the very north of the property bordering our homes. That's negotiating 101. They came with their most aggressive proposal first, instead of using the current location at the starting point and gradually moving north, much like they proposed five years ago, when the substation was to be rotated 90 degrees and moved modestly north, sitting adjacent to the current substation. Despite my claims, I'm willing to concede the benefit of the doubt to Central Hudson that perhaps it is the best course of action for them, and they may have the community's best interest at heart. Yet I stand by this statement, no one in this room, no one, can say that they would like to have a substation encroaching on their existing property, no one. There's my time. I have submitted my concerns to the public record. I thank the board for their time and involvement in this situation, truly, and I hope a better compromise can be reached. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Did Bill Carlos show up? See now, move on to the next, on the sign-up sheet is Kathy Ryder.
Hi, my name's Kathleen Ryder. I've resided at Four Debbie Court in the town of Poughkeepsie for the last 26 years. I'd like to place on record my concerns regarding the proposed NAPS Corner Station to within 220 feet of my property line. I would also like to have it on record, I find it inadequate to expect that a mailed notification 10 days prior to this public hearing is a reasonable process for a project of this enormous and adverse impact to the bordering neighbors as well as our development in general. Additionally, please note, a 5:00 PM meeting for residents who hold a full-time job to speak and defend their rights in that same one week notification is ludicrous. There's a winter concert at the elementary school in our development this evening, therefore a lot of residents are not here. We also submitted a request for signage at the opening of Kerr to advertise to the public, and it is in the Article 13, 210-151, Letter D, that the board has the right to do this, and we are requesting that this be done prior to the next meeting. This project, as currently proposed at the 220 feet to our shared property line, will have several adverse impacts to the surrounding neighborhood, not limited to decreased visual aesthetic, reduced property value and desirability, displacement of wildlife, noise, lighting, EMF health risk, and fire risk. Central Hudson, have they ever encroached on another property like this before, with this type of project? I don't believe so. Initially, the project was proposed, as my counterpart said, much, much closer. We fought this, and all of a sudden now they're able to move it back a little bit more. Next up, a balloon fly was requested several months ago. The proposed substation is slated to be at a much higher elevation than the current one. Central Hudson replied they're unable to do this balloon fly, citing it was a safety issue. Are they not an electric company, the experts, whose job it will be to construct a new substation, transfer power lines without disruption to customer service, and they don't know how to do a balloon fly safety in our area? Again, we respectfully request this be a mandatory requirement, and perhaps they could fly it over the de-energized KV line, just a suggestion. Current property line is at 202 to 207 above sea level, our home at 210, the project appearing to be erected at 190 above sea level, sea level, excuse me. Substation maximum height per recent drawings appears to be 55 feet, meaning it will be 45 feet above our current home. This doesn't take into account the view from inside the home, where your second-story floor is going to be much higher, and all of our bedrooms face that field. An 18-inch berm with six-foot trees is going to hardly make a difference for many years to come. In fact, they quoted that the trees chosen will grow approximately two to three feet per year, and with that reference, five to seven years is going to take before anything happens. Lastly, if I can please, impact to quality of life, Article 13, Letter B, numbers 1, 2, 4, and 8. My husband and Sue Durasmo will be speaking further to details regarding objections to these, and the bottom line is, no one wants this in their backyard. I doubt any of you would as well. There seems to be other acceptable alternatives. Let's not make it just about money. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, I see, is Susan Durasmo.
My name is Susan Durasmo, and I reside at Two Ronnie Lane, Poughkeepsie, for the last 19 years. I've submitted several comments and pictures regarding the NAPS Corner Substation, emails and everything. You all know how we feel. I've questioned several times why the 69 KV Tilcon equipment is to remain at the current footprint, since it is the oldest and is constrained. Finally, an answer was given November of 2019. Mr. Namisco stated Central Hudson has a long-range future vision, one day of possibly building Tilcon their own substation and retiring the equipment entirely. Where is this going to go? According to New York State Public Service Commission, direct testimony dated July 28, 2017, from their Senior Vice President of Engineering and System Operations, Paul Herring, the new 115 KV Tilcon tap station is planned as a lower-cost alternative to rebuild the 2.44 miles of existing 69 KV line that is dedicated to serve the customer. Once completed, the existing transmission feed will be retired, with the majority of the work incurring in 2021. That seems to be not that far away. Similar sentiment can be found in Central Hudson's five-year capital budget proposal, submitted to the PSC where they suggest retiring the current TR line and tap feed Tilcon to the Sandok Substation by 2022. Again, this does not feel to be that long-range vision away. If this is true, why then is the project not being done first, remove the oldest part of NAPS Corner Substation? Would this open the possibility up of rebuilding at the location as originally proposed in 2014? The planning board should request more information on this matter. The request ties into StanTech's suggestion, as stated in their December 10, 2019 letter, the town may wish to ask Central Hudson to provide detailed and future plans for Tilcon and the TR line. I do have more comments, but due to the three-minute time constraint, I will not be able to accurately portray them at this time, but I did submit quite a few. Again, it's too close, it is not harmonious, and it will have an adverse effect to our property values and our quality of lives. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next up, I see, is Andrew Ryder.
Comments for everybody, and I also have the diagram. Pass them around. I sent you all of the comments.
Yeah, those were distributed, but thank you.
Yeah, I just got it.
All right, I'm going to need the glasses, please. Good evening. My name is Andrew Ryder. I'm an engineer and have been living at Four Debbie Court, one of the bordering properties to the north for the last 26 years. I have significant concerns regarding Central Hudson's proposed substation relocation. I believe there is a conflict of interest regarding the StanTech engineering analysis. StanTech did an excellent job of identifying early on that their lead programmer for this project, lead program manager for this project, was a former contractor for Central Hudson, and that their lead engineer was also a former employee of Central Hudson. In my line of work, I need to take business ethics and code of conduct training each year. As an engineer, if I were not to recuse myself from this conflict of interest, this would be a business ethics violation, subject to legal action, penalties, and fines. For these reasons, I respectfully request the StanTech report be dismissed and disregarded, and that the town board engage another engineering firm with no entanglements with Central Hudson, and conduct a truly independent engineering analysis. My second concern is with blasting. Central Hudson has stated blasting will not be needed, however, I live on the same rock ridge that continues under the proposed substation. The reason I do not have sewer service is that blasting would have been required to install sewer. The pad for the proposed substation is at 187 feet elevation, so earth on this rock ridge will need to be removed. If Central Hudson needs to do any blasting, we require Central Hudson notify the town board and all work be stopped until pre-blast inspections and surveys are done on all neighboring properties, and blast monitoring be done with blasting seismographs at each home. This monitoring would need to be done by licensed professionals. My third concern is lighting at the substation. The proposed lighting is a 203 feet elevation, and the elevation of a person on the second floor of my home is 220 feet. From the diagram I provided, the line of sight from my second floor indicates the elevation of the proposed berm and trees would need to be 208 feet elevation at the 75-foot distance from the fence. While the six-foot trees may look nice on paper, they will do absolutely nothing to obscure the 203-foot elevation bus work and lighting for between 4.3 and 6.5 years or over 2,000 days and nights. I don't believe anyone on this board or any Central Hudson employees would want these lights intruding on their peace and tranquility for 2,000 days and nights. Screening would require trees 19 feet tall, not six feet tall. All of this will significantly degrade my property values and will bring neighboring property values down through all of Country Club Estates. I respectfully request that the town board strongly reconsider alternatives to relocate this proposed substation farther away from bordering properties. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. There's no one else signed up at this point, but is there anyone else in the room that wishes to speak tonight? Seeing now, I move we adjourn this hearing to February 20, 2019.
Second.
Moved to second, it calls to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. We'll have a chance to continue the comments in February. Let me start with Don tonight, from an engineering standpoint. Anything further on? Let's go around the board for additional comments. Start with Peter tonight.
Back in, in March, you were here, and in that meeting, you discussed the angle of The attachment deflection angle. And your comment was the effect that the transmission attachment angle should be as close to zero degrees as possible. And that, at that time, the plan that you had submitted to us, the angle of deflection was about 3.5 degrees. And you had come back to us in, in March, and by moving the facility south about 50 feet or so, you had changed the angle of deflection to around 14 degrees. And you made the comment that the maximum angle that's permitted according to engineering standards was 15 degrees. Is it that meeting that I, that it seemed like a good idea to bring in someone who had some engineering background? We had that discussion, because we are amateurs, I mean, we're not engineers. And we wanted to get some qualified response, so that we could move forward with some degree of confidence. Your attorney provided us with correspondence in October, which I thought was very thorough. It highlighted everything really that we've discussed tonight, that existing conditions, noise, lighting, screening, the EMF, all those issues were addressed in response to questions that had been posed to you by StanTech. But in none of the reports, StanTech's report, and your response to it in August, and the report that was provided to us by StanTech in November, and in the report that was provided to us by StanTech in December, was the angle of deflection discussed. And I thought this was important, because your reasoning for the location was that you could not locate it further south, because the design standard targeting angle of deflection would not permit you to move it further south. And after three tries, we've had, we've had no discussion. Can you, has it ever come up in your discussions with StanTech about the angle of deflection as that being the reason why you cannot place the facility any further south, because to do so, you would go beyond that 15-degree angle of deflection?
I'll let Brian touch on the more technical. But as far as discussions with StanTech, those have all been either in front of this board or at a single September meeting, so it's only that information, so it would only be part of that.
Let me ask you this then. We're going to, we're going to meet again in, probably in January.
Yeah.
We, February, whenever it is, we really need to have that answered, because you've taken the position that you cannot move it further south, because it would go beyond designs, the design standard of a 15-degree angle of deflection. Your concern expressed in, in March was that already at 14 degrees, you were really pushing the envelope. So we just wanted to know.
So, again, I'll let Brian jump in on this too, but that, the question of attachment angle was something that came up as part of, if you may recall, we did an alternate site analysis way back in February, and it was part of the discussion, where we were trying to give examples of, of tools in the toolbox that we have to consider when Central Hudson is designing something. And it was an important factor, but it was a factor. So the issue is an issue where you have, it's a design standard. You have, you want to build to an optimal design standard. And it's one of the reasons why it can't go further south. I don't want it to sound like, and I'll let Brian jump in on the actual technicality of it, but it's, it's, it's not the only reason it can't go south. There's a collection of issues that we talked about with civil engineering tonight, with, with locating the facility underneath active transmission lines, with the way you gain access into the site. There's a host of issues. And then within that, there's also a host of technical design issues, and that was one of them. So I can let Brian answer a little further, but I just want to make sure that it's, it's a nice thing to think about, I think, because it's sort of a number.
You're doing a great job, but if you wouldn't mind, just...
Lawyers.
The attachment angle issue, or that concern, there are, as I said before, a number of engineering references, standards, codes, designs, and guidelines, and good practice. The reference to that, as I stated, through the ACSE, I believe, the ACSE manual, those guidelines are there to provide optimum design, right? Because if you start to compromise one design by going a little further than you want to be from the design guideline, and you start practicing that on other elements, you start creating a condition that you're creating a suboptimum design for a substation. And so that was just one element, and so our engineer for transmission design is not here tonight, who could speak to that. But that is, you know, a code or a design guideline and good practice that they utilize when designing. when designing transmission line attachment angles with substation design as well. The other element, of course, was the substation location where we moved it itself, the topographical, the ridgeline issues that we were dealing with, that substantially drop off any further. So there's a host of issues.
I don't wanna cut you short, we've had that discussion before.
Yes, sir.
I really, I was most specifically interested in the attachment angle, because it seems to me that, at that meeting, you had expressed that one of the reasons, a foundation for your not being able to move it further to the south was because of the attachment angle.
Correct. That's correct. It is a, there is an engineering guideline through the manual, through the references that our engineers use, and that is one of their guidelines that they use.
Okay, before we're done here, since we have...
And I am not a transmission engineer, but we did raise this issue in our initial file review. It was question 15, and we had discussed it with our team of engineers reviewing the Central Hudson application. Central Hudson then responded in July, on July 22nd. We went over their response. Everything they said in the response is consistent with what you just heard here.
Okay, do you have a transmission engineer on your staff?
Yes.
Could we get a response from him by our next meeting that would address the question of the transmission angle?
What I will say to you, I can do that, yes.
Good.
But we reviewed the response that they gave us on July 22nd and found it to be acceptable. We understood their reason.
Could you share that with us?
Yeah, you have it.
I read through every report that you've sent us, and I thought I read it fairly carefully, and I couldn't find any reference to the transmission.
I will, I'll excerpt, I'll excerpt it and send it to you, so that you can have it directly.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I just wanna follow up on that, too. It is, I think, I hope we're answering it, though. It's a design standard, and that's what, one of the factors that go into it. So, I'm assuming that that's what they'll confirm, but I just wanna make sure we understand what's being asked.
Well, yeah, we wanna understand it, too.
No, no, what's being asked further than that. It's, that's all. I'm not sure.
Thanks. One other question, and I wanna bring our town engineer on board here, and that is, with reference to the filtration and infiltration, using stone, are you using any kind of filter? I mean, we're gonna have silt and organic material. Don, are you familiar with this system? Have you looked at it? You feel comfortable with it?
Yes. It is, there is a water quality device, and they've met the standards that are required.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Let's go to Ben. Do you have anything further?
Thank you for your presentation, and you answered questions I had as you went along. But you did say one thing that made me think, where I used to work for a heating industrial and commercial heating company. Our engineer told me once on a job, "Act locally and think globally." And somebody said that during your presentation. I think it's a good thing to remember and to consider, not only for Central Hudson, but for the local community around the substation, and surround the communities, too. So just keep that in mind, please. Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Bob?
The, one of the documents that talked about three proposed sites, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, this is a site, the one that you've chosen, is the most cost-effective and provides the best engineering options. And the reliability, et cetera, of that site with what you're planning to do is the reason that you've picked that. Is that true? Do you understand the question?
No, no, I just wanted to make sure. Is it true that...
The reason you chose that site out of the other two?
Well, the site, I mean, in first instance, it's an existing substation site, so inherently it's the site where all the infrastructure connects and runs through, so that's the logical place to locate it, I think. The alternate sites, I think you're referring to, was some, an exercise we went through as part of the overall evaluation for the project, both before and during the process, to be responsive to the questions about, hey, could you do it over here, kinda thing. So, the application was always on our proposed existing site, but we did that evaluation to demonstrate the reasonableness of our approach. And I think what you just mentioned about sound engineering design and the issues related to connectivity to the existing infrastructure were the driving factors in that, but if Brian wants to add anything.
I just wanna drive back that the number one item that we have to be concerned with is risk and reliability, system reliability. We have to make sure that we are making prudent, sound engineering decisions that make sure that we don't put our customer base as fed from the NAPS Corner Substation and the other substations tied through our loop feed, as I demonstrated, at risk for loss. And we recognize through our investigation that there is a high level of risk with a rebuild on the existing footprint with a temporary substation. In addition to that, it also expands or nearly doubles the time for construction and opens up that risk as a result of expanded time and the number of iterations that are far more than the design that we have in front of you. Those are far more important. But then, cost is also an issue, because you look at cost, and we have to acknowledge that a higher cost for a lower-quality design and a higher risk to our customer base, to the larger community, as well as that fed by NAPS Corner Substation, is not prudent design, not prudent decision-making.
Okay. I guess, you know, that was kind of the, behind my question is, why would take the cost away? The reliability and the quality of the transmission, everything, why would it be less at another site? I understand the cost difference because you're moving it, but wouldn't you, you're gonna rebuild this thing, put in a new, new substation, wherever you put it would have the same reliability, right? The same, the same capability? Why would the site...
When you say another, I'm sorry, when you say another location, do you mean on the existing property?
No. I'm just talking, going back to the three sites that were discussed in one of these documents.
Okay. So, I think you're referring to the properties at 20 Spring Road.
Yeah, and on South Road.
Which would be behind the Chestnut Plaza Mall, and I think 1970 Spring, South Road.
South Road, right.
Those two locations. So, as we provided in the February 2019 submission, we provided a separate report, an alternative site analysis report, that pointed out a number of major complications with those sites. For one thing, there is existing infrastructure on those sites, stormwater infrastructure, there's wetland pond with additional wetland buffer around there, there's other underground infrastructure that's in place. We also don't have, I should back up. A substation is not a standalone unit or operating piece. It requires tie-in to infrastructure, transmission line, distribution infrastructure. That's why the existing location where you have the NAPS Corners is situated right next to, if not connected, to the TND corridor that runs through that property. If you were to move a substation, assuming that that property was even a valid location, you now have to bring in your transmission and your distribution corridor. You're now extending it over into a location. There's a lot of complications that we've looked at in terms of not enough space. There simply isn't enough space in that property to be able to bring in distribution and transmission corridor as well as a substation. That's a separate issue from the other items that I've identified, and there's a very comprehensive explanation that's provided within that alternatives analysis report that we provided. And I would, I would just respectfully redirect the planning board to that report.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Bob. Nothing new at this time. You know, to Peter's question, I do remember that meeting as well, where you were able to respond to the neighbors' request and moved it 53 and a half feet. You said that was as much as you could go. Is there any, besides the angle, I think you had mentioned a safety concern, but is there any...
I would like to defer to Greg.
Thing more you could say tonight, or...
Sure.
Or earliest...
Sure, I think, one thing Brian mentioned that I would've liked when we had the plans up, but there are substantive transmission and distribution infrastructure in that location, which would require a safety concern and a technical issue. But from a civil engineering perspective, the stormwater management practice that we're proposing, using the substation stone as the primary mechanism for treatment, that has to be built upon native soil to promote any filtration. And given some, given the drop-off of topography in that ridgeline that runs north-south, if we take the flat substation and start to move it out, the corners will be floating. Now, if you were to say, we'll put a retaining wall and fill it in, the problem is, we need that water to connect to, some, directly to native soil to promote filtration. We don't wanna build a filtration practice, and the D E C won't let us build a filtration practice in a built condition. So that, there's, there are some fundamental civil engineering limitations that really, so it's not just about looking for a flat site, it's about complying with stormwater requirements.
Okay. So it's not just the annual attack that Peter brought up, but the infrastructure as well. Okay. And the other thing I wanted to ask, is there any comments you could say further tonight on the, on the TILCON line? There's been talk of a future substation, perhaps, separate for them? And any idea where that would be?
So, again, I'll let Brian jump in when he gives me the hook, but the, I think just for clarification, and I remember at the meeting where Brian mentioned that as part of a vision, because Central Hudson's always thinking about the future and how they have to serve different areas. There's no implication, and Brian, please correct me if I'm wrong, there's no plan for putting a TILCON substation on the NAPS Corners property. That is not. So that was a misunderstanding, I think, perhaps. That's not the case.
Okay.
The concept about, I think what Brian was talking about was actually trying to say that, in the future, the bus work at the corner may come out at some day. There's no plan for it right now, but the idea being that if they were to do something for TILCON, not at that property, that would come out. That was...
It would be at some other...
Yeah, yeah.
Site.
Brian, please.
And then that, and then that, and then that bus work could be removed at that time with those plans.
And just, and just to follow up on that, again, just, the bus works only staying there as, in, is part of the overall benefit to the type of design they're doing. As Greg said, you have to blow out that to fit that bus work in there. So, the idea is, why move it there? To make it bigger, to clear more, further...
Yeah, that, thanks for explaining that tonight, about you'd have to increase the size of the new substation.
Yeah, so I just want Brian to be clear about this as well, make sure.
And a couple of things I'd like to point out. The original rate case approval for this project, NAPS Corners, goes back, if memory serves me right, at least eight or nine years. It has been on the books for some time. There have been a number of changes and considerations and so forth, to the point where we are here today at the end of 2019, finally, you know, getting to that point of a public hearing. So, I will tell you that we have a number of projects that we put before the, put in front of the Public Service Commission for review and approval, and we do our darndest, you know, to work on these projects and get them completed. To Anthony's point regarding TILCON, and I think Greg made the point as well, we don't want to have that equipment there permanently. Our plan is to be able to get the TILCON feed closer to TILCON, to be able to have a substation for TILCON, perhaps even on TILCON's property, that would much shorten the length of the traverse of a transmission line to feed into their substation. They have their own 69 KV to 13.8 KV substation. That would allow us to not only remove and retire the existing 69 KV equipment in the NAPS Corner Substation, but we'd be able to retire the TR line, what used to be called Trap Rock, that's where the TR comes from.
Yep.
To retire that line down to that new facility. We have absolutely no plan to replace anything in the, on the existing footprint to feed TILCON in terms of a separate substation or any other consideration, other than getting it far closer to TILCON, and a much shorter run. Because it's currently about a two-and-a-half mile transmission line run from NAPS Corners.
So it's just something that was put in historically, and it's not the ideal location.
Exactly. It's there, we are looking at it as a longer range, as that vision to get that done. We'd like to work on that and complete that. I think it's safe to say that Central Hudson would like to retire that complete NAPS Corner Substation, but it certainly wouldn't make...
TILCON.
What did I say? Oh, the, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, TILCON. It would, it would, it would not make sense to move that equipment, right, to expand the new NAPS Corner Substation, only to have it retired in the future. It would expand the footprint, it would push it, arguably closer, right, and lessen the buffer to the distance on the north property line. And so it just wouldn't be a good solution, right? It's better, I think, to approach the way we approach it.
Yeah, that makes sense, why you're leaving it where it is then, for now, and not incorporating it into the, into the new one.
That is correct. That's correct.
All right. One last thing. You expressed the concern, besides the transmission angle, stormwater treatment, and because of the elevation, if you were to move the project further south on the site, it would increase your ability, your, it would be more difficult for you to handle stormwater. Have you discussed that with our engineer?
I don't think we have.
Would you discuss it with him, just so we would have a good understanding of the level of concern that you've expressed?
Sure.
So that we can, we'll have that moving forward?
We have had, we have had conversations with your engineer before on this topic. We're happy to reengage that.
It'd be very, very helpful to us if you could, of course, run that by him.
Sure.
So we have a better understanding. Thanks.
Thanks, Peter. See, anything further from anyone?
I don't know if the...
Yeah, I had a statement.
I don't know if the planning board wanted to address the request from the public for signage on the property.
Yes, I'd like to do that.
Okay.
Mike had something to say.
Yeah, I had a statement that we prepared, just related to the question that came up about STANTEC, and I wanted to read that into the record. Several public comments have been received, you know, tonight, and via email asserting that a conflict of interest exists in the retention of STANTEC in connection with this project. I wanted to provide the public with some facts. In their initial submission to the town, STANTEC disclosed their prior working relationship with Central Hudson. We had additional conversations with them and fully explored the relationship of their personal, of their personnel with Central Hudson. At the conclusion of those discussions, we determined that no prohibited conflict existed. Central Hudson had no involvement with the selection of STANTEC. They were not advised that STANTEC had been chosen as the consultant until after the decision had been made by the town. Central Hudson also promptly advised the town of the facts concerning STANTEC's personnel. We advised them that we had reviewed those facts, and that we believed that there was no prohibited conflict of interest in the retention of STANTEC by the town for this project.
Okay, thanks, Mike. As Lisa alluded to, I just wanted to go around the board and get an idea, you know, some of the neighbors had asked about additional publication, putting a sign, a public hearing notification on the property, for example. Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yep, absolutely.
In that case, I move that we approve a public hearing notification sign on the property. So I got it. Moved to the seconded. Called to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero for additional signage.
So again, it's been adjourned to February...
February 20th.
Right. So we'll make sure to get that signed and have that posted well before then, yeah.
Okay. I'm...
The town will post the sign.
I was just gonna say, I don't, I've never been asked to do the sign, so I just wanted to see...
We'll post the sign.
Okay.
I move the planning board to defer action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to comments from the planning board.
Second.
Moved to the seconded to defer. Called to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Thanks again. Thanks for your description. I think some of us understand better where you're coming from, with those comments, with that description tonight, so. Thanks. Next up on the agenda is Fox Run at Fulton, also known as Fairview Commons, our secret review rezoning recommendations to the town board, and amended site plan hearing. It's an unlisted action, Fox Run at Fulton LLC is the owner. Welcome back.
Hi, thank you very much.
It's been a few months.
Good evening, Kelly Leibl with Page Park Associates.
Good evening, Joshua Mackey, Mackey, Hudson Wise.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just noting that the plan is up, not behind you, is that proper? It's correct?
I think that's where Mike went to, I think.
Oh, okay, oh, wait.
It's not quite up yet.
So you're connected, and it's over there, but we don't have it over in front of the board this way either.
Good work. See it at that angle. Technology's good when it works.
Yes, we have a backup.
Three settings, let's see. Okay, we got that there.
That's better.
Want me to just turn the TV over?
No, no, just give it a second.
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe it may not work. But that monitor is working also.
Oh, now we're, now we're seeing.
Okay, good.
We still not back there?
Yeah, it'll take maybe a moment longer because it needs to.
Okay, do you want me to start?
Sure.
I think.
Just for purposes of.
Yeah, public can see those monitors and we can see it there, so.
Everyone else can see it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Where is the remote for that? I'm supposed to press the button to turn it off.
Oh.
It's okay, this is quick.
I think we can do without it tonight.
Yeah, I'll go quick.
It's on the screen.
As long as you guys can see it and the public can see it.
Yeah, we're good, we have these screens.
So, again, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm Kelly Leibl with Page Park Associates, and this is on the Fox Run, or the also known as Fairview Commons project. This is a request this evening for a amended site plan approval. And as many of you know, this project was originally before the planning board back in 2013 and 2014, for a review of the larger project, at which time the planning board approved three multifamily residential buildings. There was a total of one hundred and fifty-one units, whoops, four hundred and fifty-one parking spaces, and the access remains from Cedar Avenue and from Fulton Street. There was a NAGDEC, there was a approval from the Town of Poughkeepsie Town Board, applying the prod overlay district, and ultimately, the site plan approval in January fifteenth, 2015. This is the, a copy of the approved site plan. There was a building A, which was fifteen units, building B was seventy-eight units, and building C was fifty-eight units. Currently, building B and C are built, for any of you who have been down there. The subject of this application tonight and the subject of the amendment involves building A, which is, this works right here on, on the plan. So the current application, again, is for the site plan amendment. We are adding three additional parcels to the project area, which increases the total project area by an additional one point eight acres. We're increasing the size of building A from thirty-four hundred square feet to seventy thousand four hundred square feet, increasing the dwelling units from one hundred and fifty-one total to two hundred and four total, increasing the parking from four hundred and forty-seven spaces to five hundred and sixty-four spaces, and increasing the open space by two point one acres. Ultimately, if this board takes action, this project also requires the approval from the town board, the three parcels that are being included in this additional project area would require a rezone and a similar prod overlay district applied to those parcels as well. The additional parcels, I apologize that this is an antiquated photo and had prior construction, but this was what was available. The three additional photos are shown on the map. Most of you know the Avelo property, that comprises two of the parcels. The third parcel, many of you would not know, it, this was a vacant piece of land at the end of Lake Street, which is a paper road, it's really a driveway at this point, and it's a vacant lot that's at the end of the property but was adjacent to our existing property, and that's right here. This is the overall site plan, which we had provided to you, and again, the area of this public hearing, really in this meeting, is this area in the corner of the plan, which represents the modification to building A. This is a blow up of the site plan, so that you can see the modification to the building and the additional parking spaces that are being proposed. Again, the majority of this work occurs on the Avelo property. We did provide you with a complete drainage plan. The project will be similar in drainage to the, the prior project, which is a series of parking lots that have porous pavement and collect to a storm system that was installed in the middle of the, in the middle of the facility, so that will be reused. We provided you with the utility plan. Water will come from Cedar Avenue, there was a master meter pit that was installed, you know, at the other end of the site, and water will connect from the master meter pit. Sewer will connect from Fulton Street, so a minor lateral connection. We did provide you with a detailed landscaping plan. All the plantings are identical in species to the plantings that are on the site, so it will blend well in with the facility. We also provided you with a lighting plan, showing that there's no off-site lighting or disturbance. The building footprints, just showing where we had some management and fitness room. And these are the elevations for the building, they are identical to the existing buildings that are there now. This is a rendering looking west, so that would be if you were at the entrance off of Fulton Street, looking toward the rail trail, looking toward the river. And this would be the opposite direction, so this would be if you were on the corner of the Avelo property, looking east. I just wanted to provide some photos of the existing site, in case any of you had not been able to drive over there or go to the site. These are just some older aerial footage. This was building B. This is building B and C. This is just a view looking towards the south of building B, and this is both the property, projects looking south. And in the bottom corner of the, this photo is the property, part of the property that we purchased for the expansion. And that would be it, in case you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
All right, thanks, Kelly.
Thank you.
Let's go to Eric.
It's been in front of the board for a while, I think some of the questions we've worked through in the last couple of months having to do with cultural resources and an issue on, on the, the additional parcels with respect to environmental reports, those have all been submitted, so staff is prepared. It requires a couple of sets of actions in either case. One is if the board determines that it's, it's ready for a negative declaration, draft has been provided for your consideration, and also a possible motion to recommend, for zoning recommendation to the town board. In either case, the board can't take action on the site plan further until after, until the town board decides on whether or not to rezone the properties. So that would require deferral of the application until after that, after that town board consideration of the rezoning.
Okay.
And the, the second set of actions to consider would be to, would be just to defer action. In either case, there is a public hearing advertised on the application which should be opened.
Great, thanks, Eric. As Eric mentioned, it's for public hearings, so I move we open the public hearing for this project.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. There was no one signed up, but is there anyone in the audience wish, wish to comment on this project? Seeing that, I move we adjourn the public hearing to, ready to come back for January, Kelly?
I don't, doesn't the town board need to advertise for their public hearings, so won't they be at least two months? So is it worth coming back in January, or do you want to wait till February?
Yeah, the earliest the.
That's right.
Yeah, it's good, they're going to have to advertise for a public hearing.
For a public hearing, right.
The alternate would be February twentieth. Yeah, I don't think it could be before that.
All right, I move we adjourn the public hearing to February twentieth, two thousand and nineteen.
Twenty twenty.
Two thousand, twenty twenty, right?
Second.
Don't want to go backwards. Called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. At this point, we'll go around the board, start with Don. Any environmental issues with this one?
We have a few comments, nothing of any great consequence, but we're just looking for flow data from the existing fire hydrants, and secondly, we wanted to make sure that the plat, the site plan has the notes on it for all of the environmental stuff that was in, in the reports. Those are the two major things.
Okay, no, no swift problems, others?
Nope.
Great. Rachel?
No, nothing at this time.
Bob?
No, nothing for me.
All right, Ben?
Yep.
Peter?
Pretty quick, I guess the only comment I, so I was, I'm still, you're wondering if, for better pedestrian connections, the, you have the sidewalk along the western side of the building, and comes around the eastern side of the building to that small parking lot, is there any way to also connect it into that sidewalk along Fulton? So just to make another connection there, so that anybody that happens to come around to the east side of the building will be able to.
So to connect the sidewalk behind the building over to the Fulton, the existing Fulton Street sidewalk?
Yes, if they happen to be going that direction.
Yes.
Instead of taking the longer way around. Depends which way they come out of the dorm, like the apartments.
Yes, understood, and we'll look at that and make a connection.
And the only thing I would note for the board is, in Kelly's presentation, she indicated there were a hundred and seventeen new parking spaces and, I think, fifty-four units, and in the draft NAGDEC that the board has in front of them, it was a hundred and fifteen, and I believe fifty-three. So we should just make those edits before the board takes any action on the NAGDEC.
All right, thanks.
The, as a clar, the net increase is fifty-three units, so that was correct, it was a total increase of, it was fifty-seven new units in this building, but the net is fifty-three.
The net is fifty-three, okay.
Yep, and the one seventeen was correct.
We, I think we have one fifteen.
Yep, it was one seventeen.
So it's one seventeen.
Adjust that in the NAGDEC.
And which is consistent with Mazur's comment letter as well.
Okay, thank you.
Or James Hays, sorry.
All right, I think we're, the hearing's been adjourned, so. I move that the planning board determine that the proposed Fox Run at Fulton, AKA Fairview Commons action, would not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and that no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in the secret negative declaration for an unlisted action dated December nineteenth, twenty nineteen. With, add, with the modifications that, we just said on traffic. With, with the modification. If I could just interrupt you on the description of the action on your draft NAGDEC, it says initial site plan approval from the planning board, December nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen. I don't have that date, but that's just a typo that you want to fix that date. Just noticing it now.
I think it was twenty fourteen was the date of the original approval, I have, we'll have to look, but yes, thank you for that.
Sorry, I didn't get it earlier. Oh, that's on the NAGDEC.
It was, the, the date of the original approval was not December of twenty nineteen, if that's what it says, but we'll.
All right.
Thank you, Jeff.
Moved, motion with all those amendments, then seconded. Called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. I move that the planning board convey to the town board that it is unable to make a recommendation regarding to the town board's referral of a proposed zoning map amendment to rezone tax parcels, sixty-one, sixty-two dash zero five dash one six one seven eight eight, sixty-one, sixty-two dash zero five dash one two five seven nine one, sixty-one, sixty-two dash zero five dash one one nine eight two four, and sixty-one, sixty-two zero nine dash one six eight seven three seven, consisting of plus or minus fifteen point eighty-eight acres to a Fairview Center district with a planned residential overlay district designation. Because it is unclear whether student housing is consistent with the intent and purpose of the prod as outlined in two ten dash twenty-one A, the planning board notes that the existing Fox Run at Fulton, at Fulton Project, FKA Fairview Commons, serves primarily as student housing. This fact was not established at the time of initial recommendation by the planning board to the town board. The planning board has no objection to the project finding that it is well-run, provides needed student housing, and otherwise benefits the town. The planning board notes that the town board could clarify its intent that the prod includes such student housing by adopting a zoning tax amendment to add students to the illustrative and admittedly not exclusive list of tenant types set forth in two ten dash twenty-one A.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy holidays, everyone.
One more, one more motion.
Oh, I thought that was it, sorry.
I move that the planning board defer further action on the site plan application pending action on the proposed rezoning by the town board, and a revised submission by the applicant is subject to the following: Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies. Said responses to be reviewed by the planning board, planning department as to adequacy and completeness inclusive of the following items, one through twelve.
Second.
Moved in seconded to defer. Called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Now I can say, happy holidays.
Happy holidays, yeah.
Take care.
See you next year. Should be able to see things more clearly in twenty twenty, right?
Oh.
Been waiting. We're waiting for that opportunity. Apparently not. All right, next up, seven sixty-six Main Street, secret review and special use permit review and site plan hearing for proposed renovation of an existing building to include four residential units, three, three on the first floor, second floor, and one accessible unit on the first floor, as well as a almost two thousand square foot of retail space on the first floor. Zone ATC, Arlington Town Center, unlisted action, RS Two Holdings LLC is the owner. Welcome back, guys.
Good evening. Matt Day, Dan Stico's Engineering, I'm here with Mr. Ray Travis and the owner, Mr. Mark Day, owner of the business.
Okay. How are you?
Just touching on some key points from the last time this was in front of the board. Parcel is currently occupied by a vacant building that which used to serve as the, the old Arlington Firehouse and an auto garage. We're proposing to renovate the existing building, which will serve now as retail space and will also serve to have four residential units, one downstairs and three on the second floor. The footprint of the building, the existing footprint is not going to be modified. Parking is proposed on the southernmost end of the parcel and will only be serving, bless you, and will only be serving the tenants of the residential units, they will not serve the retail, retail parking will be served by existing on-street parking only. We begun making the changes requested in all the comment letters that we did receive from the town. Those changes will be made and resubmitted at the next submission date. The only question we do have for you guys is, based on the circumstances, we do have, we have frontage on both Lewis Avenue and Main Street, we weren't sure which the board would consider as our front yard and our side yard.
Our rear yard or side yard. Sorry. Because in our, in our case, we have, we have obviously two frontages, so we need to go to the ZBA. So we're trying to figure out which, which, what the board would consider.
Luckily for you.
Luckily for you, you have the ZBA attorney also in the room.
Well, there's that, but there's also the fact that you'll need a more specific denial letter from the zoning administrator, and he will set forth the facts of, so it's actually going to come from him initially, and then what they typically do is both are deemed to be front yards, and then it's a question as to what's the side yard or rear yard because the code is rather vague, but you'll get a more, an updated letter from Tom.
Okay.
And we should plan to meet about that probably early, you know, soon after the new year, so we can help you guys get your application set up.
Thank you. Sounds good. All right, is that it? Yeah, did you want to go over architectural review this evening, or? Let's hold off, I mean, you could give us a...
Typically, we do the architectural review after you get the other approvals, so since in this case, I think the board's looking toward a deferral until next month, so we can get the ZBA issues ironed out and see what the scope of that is, and then, cause that affects also the ability to grant the special use permit, so we'll do that.
I just wanted to waste everybody's time back here, so. Thanks Lisa, I just wanted to, I just wanted to say, you know, initial look there looks good, but... Thank you. We'll go around the board in a minute. This is on for public hearing, so I move we open the public hearing for, oh, let me go to...
Oh, yeah, I can just bring it up to speed, so Lisa touched on kind of the options that are before you, I spelled out an approval process or a deferral process. Given the nature of some of the outstanding questions as they relate to the ZBA, I think we're leaning towards deferral. I also did have, had the chance to have a conversation with Duchess County DPW just this afternoon, they were able to submit some comments as it relates to the proposed correction, or not correction, but just changing of the drop curb to a formalized curb in front of the building, to potentially gain a parking space or two to help serve your business, or just help with on-street parking. Carol provided, I think Carol...
We have, we have a copy.
Yeah, okay, great. So that was a concern that was discussed earlier with the board, earlier this week with the board, that just came out of, okay, well, there's a private property owner just adjacent to you, who I think you actually might have had a chance to connect with while you were waiting, so thank you for that, and maybe you can talk a little bit about what that discussion was like, but I know there's concern about shared access through there, or, the, basically the bottom line is that DPW at the county level is actually happy about the, the closure or, or removal of that drop curb in front of the building, because it did have a prior use, but if you're not going to be using it anymore, why are we going to maintain that, and just encourages people to park incorrectly in front of the business, essentially, and you don't want that, of course, so, but that said, they also were pretty clear in that they didn't want to get into the business at this time even of removing the access in that alleyway between the two buildings. So obviously you saw that and you just received that, we just got that in this afternoon at 4:25, so if you want to speak to that a little bit and tell us about...
Yeah, if we can, we did meet with the owner's representative, as you pointed out. If we can, we'd like to leave the, the drop curb in front of that alley just to be good neighbors, although they don't own that, they don't own but a couple of feet on that, actually a foot, but, but the applicant wants to be able to let them, you know, have access to it, so if the, if it's okay with the board, we'd like to leave it a drop curb just in the parameters of the alley.
Yeah, and just because Eric had brought it up for a, a separate project, but a sort of similar situation, if we're looking at that, can we just be mindful of sightlines and maybe, I don't know if there are certain elements you can incorporate, and you're going to go through this review process with the county, so just as long as you're having that conversation with them and adhering to their requirements, I think we're okay.
Okay. That sounds good, that was one of my issues with this, so, good. At this point, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for this project.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. Is there anyone in the audience which is to comment on this tonight? Ken? Seeing, seeing none, I move we adjourn this public hearing to, are we going to be able to turn around for January, or?
Well, I think we're gonna want to work through the ZBA issues first. So let's go with February.
Yeah. I move we adjourn the public hearing to February 20th, 2020.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. Can we make application of the ZBA at this point?
Yes, you can, because we're doing an uncoordinated secret review, so they'll be able to make their own secret determination, so we can definitely get that process moving.
All right, so we don't come back to you until then, or just come back in February? It's uncoordinated, so either way. Okay.
Right, for now, we'll have you on the agenda in February, and then we'll see where, what the status is then of the ZBA, and perhaps you'll be able to respond to other planning board comments at that point with an eye toward potential final approval.
The ZBA also meets earlier in the month, so it's, you know, likely that you'd be able to get yourself on the February agenda for the ZBA, and they're, and assuming that there aren't any big questions or issues with them, that we'd be in a position in February, perhaps.
We actually have answered a lot of the comments, I, I don't want to push the board, my client does, but is it possible to get in, in for January, that we, I know we're due Monday?
Well, we could certainly have before this board for January if you wanted to be on the public hearing, but I don't know, because this is also a special use permit, and we don't know what the parking is going to change, whether it's going to change, if you need variances from the ZBA, I know one of the things when it goes, the board goes around with their comments, they wanted to address the number of parking spaces and the accessibility, and they, there may be some discussion that comes out of that, so I think it would be helpful to have you come back, right?
Yep.
For that meeting.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks Lisa. All right, let's go around the board for comments, nothing from a engineering standpoint. Rocco?
I've got some questions regarding the parking, especially the, the two that are front to back. I don't know how the front one would have access if there's a car in the second one?
It's an agreement that'll be made by, in the lease, that's how they're gonna, they're gonna...
Right, but you'd have to go on to other people's properties to get in and out of there, if there's even room to get in and out of there.
We have, we, we have made it fit, I mean, it, it does fit, it's...
Well, it fits if you get, if one goes in and one goes after, but let's say the second car is there and the first car needs to, to get out.
They're gonna have to be very cordial neighbors.
All right, well, I'm not sure that that's, that that's gonna quite work.
Well, we only have, we only have four units, so...
Right, but that's, well, then, then we can talk about the ADA spot, what happens if there isn't a need for the ADA spot, you really only have then three spots, especially if there's, I was of the understanding that the two parking ba, uh, spots that are back to back are going to be assigned to one apartment?
Correct.
Okay, and so if there isn't a need for the ADA, that leaves three spots for three apartments, and the rule of thumb is 1.5 over four, right, so that's, that's where you got your, your six spots. I, I just would like some, my clarification there, because it seems like especially the ones with the cordial neighbors or the cordial household, it seems a little untenable, and it could result in the front car having to go onto private property to get in and out of there, if it's even possible to do that.
Yeah, it's, it's the neighbor that we're, we're giving access to, through our alleyway, so it's...
Who owns that alleyway, you do?
Yes.
What happens if there's a car parked there?
Well, it's not...
You're gonna have to get a towed first?
It's not a parking lot, it's not a parking space.
Well, I know that, but there's, you know...
Well, yeah, I mean, that would be the, the end result, would be more likely I'd have to have a tow, whether there's a big area in the back, excuse me. There's a larger area in the back behind our, behind our building in, in the corner.
Right, I see that, but is that your land also?
No, that's the neighbor's land that we're giving access to the alleyway, so we'll be allowed, if the car has to pull out, they can turn around in that area there to pull back out.
Can that be memorialized somehow?
We'd have to... We can, I mean, we can, we're gonna...
That's in the best interest of the private property owners, that's not necessarily something that we're going to get involved with, but that, what they're trying to explain is that if a car needed to turn around in that space, they're kind of working together, so there's, there's, the neighbor at 768 Main Street is working with the neighbors at 766, which is the application before you. And that actually didn't really come to fruition until this evening that you were able to have that conversation, so they were just having that dialogue out in the hallway while the other application was presenting, so there, it would be in your best interest to memorialize or have some kind of agreement.
Right, sounds good.
Yeah, I mean, that's my primary concern, I mean, I like the project, I think it'd be great there, it'd be a great use, but you know, we can't, if we can foresee some issues, let's get them cleared up ahead of time. We're one of the people getting into fights there, over a parking street, which happens all the time.
Yeah.
All right, thanks. Bob?
I think in the past you'd indicated that all the retail parking is street parking?
It would be on the street, correct.
And so ADA-type people would park on the street, or, if they have the, is there an ADA slot that would be available for someone visiting the retail business?
Uh, we, there's really nothing, there's nothing that's, the only ADA spot we're proposing is for the residents. It would, it would be like any other condition on Main Street for an ADA person, I can't speak to how that would be done, but...
Are, are there ADA spots on the street now?
I didn't see any, but again, that's a conversation that I'm, I, if, you know, you could ask the applicant maybe to have with Duchess County DPW, because they're, they're ultimately going to be in charge of the work you're doing in their right-of-way, so it, it might, you know, depending on the retail space you're trying to fit up in there, it might actually be beneficial to you to do so.
If we did the loading zone, if you will, for the ADA spot, I mean, it may be to their best interest to leave the drop curb, because then if you did put an ADA spot on Main Street that served the site, then you would want to keep the drop curb.
Yeah, well, we don't want to speak for DPW, so...
Yeah, I suggest you do have that conversation with them to see, because generally, Main Street doesn't have those noted out, because they are close to the businesses anyway, I believe. Is that it? All right, Ben, anything?
No, nothing.
And Peter?
Two things, number one, it's a great adaptive reuse.
Thank you.
I mean, it's gonna be a nice project. I, with regard to what Rocco had to say, in the words of Robert Frost, a good fence makes a good neighbor, you know, if you could work it out with a neighboring property, maybe a shared right-of-way, save you a lot of big headaches down the road, you know, if you can do it, but I mean, that's up to you, but something that I would certainly recommend. The property, you know, has a lot of history besides the fire department, I don't know, you may know that Henry Nolan McCracken, who was the president of Vassar College, I think for over 30 years, he established a free clinic in that building back in the twenties or thirties, where he had doctors, volunteer physicians come in and treat children in the community that couldn't afford medical care, and they, and he had, the clinic was, was, was there for, for many years, and was a really a great asset to the, to the neighborhood and to the town.
Well, we just found out there was livestock on it too.
Really? Yeah, we had the bull market just down the street in Arlington, yeah. Thank you, good luck.
Is one of the apartments going to be accessible?
Yes, first floor, yes. Yep, that's the, yeah, I echo Peter's sentiment, it's a great seed of adaptive reuse. Thank you. I did want to mention Light Spillage to the neighborhood, make sure there's no... Yes, we did that, we did a lighting plan, which is in our package, we're proposing wall pads and goose necks in the front that are all down, downlit. Okay, and it sounds like you're working out that driveway access, that's great, the drop curb, and just the DPW issue with, with the handicap. And lastly, I just want to ask, you know, it's a lot of history with this building, is there any, it's not on historic register though, or anything like that? No, no. Okay, so as you're keeping the architecture and stuff in mind to, to keep some of that historic status, or if there's any artifacts you find in there to talk to, nothing left, nothing left to this point, the pole is gone. All right.
Did anyone else have comments preliminarily on the architecture, or it might be the time to state if you have any comments, so...
Sounds good. It looks nice primarily, you know, what type of colors, is gray and white? That's black and white. Yeah. We, we're actually gonna be using a raised seam roof, this, this is the, it's actually charcoal color, but this is the actual front. Okay. And we're you, we're gonna go with two-tone gray. Is that siding, or? Oh, the siding, this is the roof. The roof, for the roof, okay, yeah. Yeah, this will be siding, it's existing cedar shake, yeah. Cedar shake, okay. An existing cup block. Charcoal color for the roof, so. Right. I don't see this, or... No, that's good for that later. And we'll do the final...
My mother always says, don't chew your cabbage twice, okay?
And we'll go through that when we come back for the final approval. Okay.
I move that the planning board defer action on this application, direct the applicant to respond to comments in writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, including but not limited to the following items 1 through 5.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. Good to go for now. Thank you, thank you. If you wish, just to clear up, have a great holiday, yeah. Happy New Year. See you soon enough. All right, next up on the agenda was Vassar In-N-Out Institute, which has asked to been, been adjourned, so I move we adjourn the application to January 16th, 2020. Moved in seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. At this time, I will ask for a motion, I will move that we allow public comment on any other agenda items tonight's agenda. Moved in seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. Is there anyone in the audience which to comment on any other items? Seeing none, I move we resume the meeting. Go here, second.
Second, I'm sorry.
Moved in seconded to resume the meeting, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. All right, welcome.
Good evening, Ken Casamento from LRC.
This item is Vassar Science Building, amended site plan for trash enclosure.
I'll go this way.
Type 2 action, Vassar College the owner.
Good evening, I hope everyone's coming in. Oh, we're going through a reset. Can you guys see it?
Now we can see it, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Good, yeah, we don't need the big screen, you'll see it up there, but, so I'll, I'll go from there. In 2013, we, some of you were here when we approved the science project.
We, this is relative to moving a dumpster location down in the bottom, so as, as you can see here, this is the overall approved plan that was originally approved. The area in question, it, it is down behind Olmsted Hall, and what basically occurred was, as we've got this open, Shakespeare went through over here, just a little bit of a modifications and some work in their garden, and the view from the terrace of the science project looked right into the dumpster, and not into the Shakespeare garden. So through, through that, when this was also done, we had put, the landscape architect had located the handicap spaces here, which used to be the ADA off entrance to the building and is not at this point. There is an old lift, but if you go in, there's no key to get in the lift, you have to call security to get the key. The, the main entrance to that is, is down in here, and Vassar relocated the two spaces... and Vassar relocated the two spaces in this area here at some point, so they can get access to it, right, and put them in there.
Makes sense.
So when it was approved, the fire department access really was down through here in Olmsted, and that was included in the package where, when they approved. And this was necked down to about twelve feet, thirteen feet. Part of what we're doing is just reshaping this corner here. And you can see my cursor, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Reshaping this corner here, which is this corner here, and then opening it up. Taking the dumpster and physically moving it over, making it a brick detail. And I do understand from some of the engineers' comments, we have to modify the detail that's there, both on the gate and the walls, make sure it's reflective with the code. But for the majority of it, it is going to be a standard dumpster pad, but they're gonna have it match the brick that's outside with metal gates. This dumpster pad being that it costs a lot of money to put in and is there, it doesn't really make sense to do the excavation and removal and that. So they're going to cut it down to about an eighteen-foot, eighteen-inch height, put a capstone on it and make it kind of a sitting area as an entry into the landscape garden, cutting this out here and coming up with a more entry-like feature. One of the items noted is, in the comments, is the berming that was here, and there's some landscaping, and for whatever reason, this tree was relocated here during construction. But, and you can see, this is the tree here, and again, the tree here. This curb gets cut back just a little bit to allow that radius for the truck to go in, but the idea is to move that whole root ball just over to the right so it still maintains that same spot and the grading will still be the same. That's it in a nutshell.
Alright. Thanks, Ken.
You don't have those pictures? The picture that you showed?
No, no. Eric?
Staff, there's a few comments and staff completing up of the plans and a couple of questions, I think. But with that as conditions, I think they're amenable to conditions of approval. If the board agrees, so staff is recommending that the board act on the grant conditional site plan approval. It's a type-two action, so there's no environmental review required. And the applicant has requested that she waive the public hearing.
Alright, thanks, Eric. At this time, I move that we do waive the public hearing for this project.
Second?
Moved in seconded, call to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion passes five to zero.
Let's go around the board for comments. Any drainage issues or such stuff?
No drainage issues. The only, the only issue of any concern is we had a, an outstanding concern with pH levels and we've asked for some notes on the plan so that they would be enforceable in the future. We did not have those notes on the, on the Vassar, the last Vassar plan. So that's the only thing of any consequence.
Thanks. Alright, yes. Ben, anything? Peter?
The ground, total ground disturbance, three thousand nine hundred eighty-four square feet, sixteen square feet short of the four thousand square foot requirement. I couldn't find anything on the, on the plans that were submitted to us that represent that area of disturbance. And I think as a condition of approval, I'd like you to submit a plan with the arithmetic.
Yep.
That, you can give that to Don and have him look at it, just make sure, you know, that sixteen square feet is...
I believe, actually, one of Eric's comments also was to mark it out in the field as well.
Just so we, we memorialize it.
Yep, understood.
Great, thanks.
If I would, just because it was, it did come up in other comments, I just wanted to, I forgot to mention it. There was a question about the floodplain in the aquatic resource department.
Yes.
This, this gray line here represents the floodplain as it was approved in the original plans, as it was noted on the plans. It is not, albeit shown on the DEC mapper and way up into the middle, middle of Olmsted Hall. It is not in that location. This red line, which was not on the plans, I, I offset and made a twenty-five-foot line, which would be, and again, we're right close to it, right in this touch, but even if we did go into it, we would be under the threshold for requiring a resource permit in that one little area. But needless to say, we'll still mark it out.
Under the heading, "We don't want the fox guarding the hen house."
Understood.
Thanks.
Ken, when, could you just place those lines on the revised plan for the next supplemental?
The, the aquatic resource specifically, the others were, were on the plan. The floodplain was noted, it just might not have been as clear, so we'll make sure it's clear.
Alright, thanks, Peter. Rocco?
I'm good.
Bob? Alright. The other thing I have is, I guess you're okay with it being that close to the door?
Yeah, that was the intent, is to keep it into the door. That's where a primary component of them come out as well. The only component that uses this side is the animal waste that is in the bottom of, of that side. That's what that whole walk was put in for.
Thanks.
I move that the planning board grant conditional site plan approval subject to the following. Respond to the comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies. Said response is to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness, including but not limited to the following, items one through eight, A, B, C, and D, and items nine and ten.
I think from what Peter said, should we add?
The additional.
Yeah, ten says, "Planning board comments," so that should include Peter's.
Second?
Moved in seconded, call to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion passes five to zero. Do you have any? You said there's maybe an archway into the garden from an architectural standpoint? Do you have anything to show us?
They haven't fully designed anything for it, there was just a discussion of it. If we get there, and the, and the board needs it to come back specifically for that. I mean, there was wood arches there at the gates before, just like a trellis type thing.
Oh, okay.
It's not a...
Not, not like a brick construction?
No, no, not a big brick structure, more of a simple structure. They want to keep the visibility into Shakespeare Garden and not block it with a large structure. That's why we're cutting down the walls and doing all that.
Does the board want to just leave it at the discretion of planning staff so that they can have final say?
Yeah, move we waive architectural review and leave it at the discretion of planning staff when the design gets, comes in.
Second?
Moved in seconded, call to question?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Have a good holiday.
Good luck, yep. Happy New Year.
I'm just gonna stay here.
Yep. Jeff, you're not ready yet.
Jeff thought he was getting up.
Ken, you're giving, you're giving Jeff a run for his money in terms of most appearances. I think we should start the poll for 2020.
I, I will not beat it, I guarantee it.
I think we gotta get him an assigned, a special chair. Next up is Coralwood Ventures Offices, Seeker Review, Lot, Lot Revision Review, and amended site plan review regarding the development of a maintenance yard, four thousand square foot office space, 240 Van Whitey Road and 300 Van Whitey Road. Zoned at heavy industrial, it's an unlisted action, LLC and Coralwood Ventures owners. Welcome.
How are you? Ken Casamento from LRC Group. Good evening. So this project actually has, in the background, been going on for a little while. They had purchased lot one, which is shown here, and it is highly impacted by the wetlands buffer and the floodplain that is in there. We were actively working with the DEC for alternate options at that time. You'll see how long it's been going back. We, we were talking to Mr. Wilson when he was in Mike's position about looking at trying to shift, shift the building as close to the north lot to see if we could get variances to avoid as much impacts. And then we finally reached a point where the DEC thought we were in a good spot. We come into the staff now and did a preliminary meeting, and Mike had the great idea of, what if you could switch land with the other property owner? And that's where it basically came through. We, we swapped land in the amount from lot, what is now, and oops, sorry. What is now lot two moved to lot one. So we just took the land that was down in this area and moved it up and put it into an area that is substantially a better location for development and left that area that is impacted by the wetlands, the buffer and all that alone. The project does have, is proposed a four thousand square foot building. It has about 0.89 acres of ground disturbance that's there. It's a very minimal-use office, so it has 320 gallons per day of usage for sewer. There was discussions with Franco about connecting into the sewer main that is out on the road. I know there was some discussion in the letter about it not being in the sewer district, so we will have to petition the town board, I believe, in the process to be, have sewer tenancy agreement to allow that to discharge into that area. So that'll be a step in the process that we would have to do.
Okay.
One of the questions that came up, because the site, the two properties, when you put them combined, has a lot of wetland buffers and DEC-impacted wetlands on it. The question, real thing, and I don't know if you were able to visit this portion of site during your site walk, but there's a, quite a bit of elevation difference as you go from the wetlands to the actual building and the property. The nearest area where we're working is about 150 feet away from the actual wetland, and it's about 24 feet higher than the actual wetland. So, and, and it's been actively used as kind of storage and materials and stuff over time. And now they're just trying to make it a nice office and formalize it. So as you can see here by just some of the grading, you can see it's about a 141 down at the wetlands, 163 all the way at the driveway, and then comes up to 165, and then still climbs into the site as a whole.
Alright. Sounds like it was a good alternative. Kristen?
Thanks, Ken, for the overview. So I have preliminarily classified this as an unlisted action subject to a coordinated review. I just had a few comments. The blending turtle habitat is pretty prevalent in this area. The application was sent to our environmental consultant for a preliminary review. She did not, we were not expecting an actual review letter for this particular meeting, but wanted to just keep her in the loop going forward. I know that she's received the material, she's reviewing them, and we expect her to just be a part of the discussion maybe as we proceed for elements such as, you know, walking the site with you and making sure that the appropriate measures are in place, possibly during construction and all that, so... And then I did have just a number of comments, I mean, as you would expect for a first time through review process. I do have the application set up, you know, and I'll leave that to the planning board based on your review and comments when you go around. But you could adopt a seeker lead agency intent resolution this evening and then defer action pending the establishment of lead agency or defer action with comments and seek a revised agreement. The question comment I have about this is that, once we got engineering comments in about the sewer tenancy, I'm not sure how that factors into the review process, if we want to coordinate or do... I don't, I wasn't sure about that. That was as I was developing. If that's a process that might start prior to this, Don, I don't know if you have insight or comments about that, but...
You, you talking seeker-wise?
Yes, but then also just procedurally, is that something that you would want to see? Because I know in other instances, is that something you would want to see coming?
I'd want to at least know that the, that the town board was aware of this and that they were, you know, there wasn't anybody that was against it.
I think a coordinated review would be appropriate for this action.
We don't necessarily have to have the tenancy agreement completed, but we should be working on it.
Alright, thanks. In that case, let's go around the board for additional comments. Peter?
When you're the, your client purchased this property or acquired it, did they do like a phase-one environmental site assessment?
Not that I'm aware of. They haven't purchased this sec, this portion of the parcel yet. Obviously, we have to establish a subdivision or an alter, a lotline alteration in order to purchase this portion, which is part of this action. But they had not done one on this.
Do you anticipate that they'll, before they acquire it, that they'll...
I don't know that answer, I can ask.
Yeah, just for, just let us know.
Thanks.
Thanks, Peter. Ben? Bob? And Michael? On this project?
Based on what Peter was saying, was there any, did we check to see if there's ever any spills or contamination?
I don't believe one came up through the mapper when, when we did it.
Everything's okay because?
Yeah, there's nothing on...
No, it's, there are other, other sites that were, yeah.
Okay.
Not, not on the property, no.
Okay.
Mapper, the EAF mapper?
Yeah.
Yeah, covers a lot of territory.
Yeah, yeah, it does. But nothing did come up specific to this project. But, you know, it's worth asking the question to see if they're gonna do it.
Alright. I think we're ready to...
I move that the planning board declare its intent to be lead agency coordinating environmental review of the proposed project as an unlisted action and authorize the planning department circulation of a notice of said intent, a copy of the EAF and a copy of the application to identified involved agencies.
Second?
Moved in seconded for lead agency circulation, call to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion passes five to zero.
I move that the planning board defer action on this application pending the establishment of a lead agency and direct the applicant to respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, including but not limited to the following, items one through nine, and any comments from the board tonight?
Second?
Moved in seconded, call to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, everyone.
Good luck, looks like it's a good location compared to where, yeah, with the well, that big well nearby there, so, that's great.
Have a wonderful holiday.
You, too, Ken.
It's all yours, Ken.
Andy caught it in his comments, so he's, they can resubmit that and we can make sure that they circulate that when we do it next week, hopefully.
Item C3, Eastdale Village, formerly known as McDonald High Town Center. Got two items, an amended site plan review and a lead agency for a new lot. So let's start with the amended site plan review.
Chairman, again, Jeff Kane with Kurtoff Company is representing Eastdale Village MHTC Development LLC. So we're here with a couple of, I think, minor changes to the site plan. Just wanted to start with an overall of the west side of the project, just to orient you with, with what, what we're looking at. The, the first change is really what's located where there were garages behind buildings two and three. And just to, again, kind of highlight the area I'm talking about over here in the, in the corner. This is the area of the, where the former garages were, this, this bubbled area on the plan in front of you. And again, just to, just to kind of blow that up so you can see what's, what, what, what we're proposing in that area. Buildings two and three, those are both three-story, elevator-serviced buildings, each with 38 apartments. There were garage structures back here. We decided to eliminate those structures as part of this, part of this phase of development. And we picked up 17 parking spaces as a result of doing that. And then we picked them up in an area where we think we were, we needed them to service our, our residents in this corner of the site. You know, there were some minor, very minor grading changes when we, when we, when we, we made that change. There were no water, sewer, or drainage changes. We did add these two light, light poles to, to match the lighting across the, across the rear property line, so that's, it was really kind of the only, the only change that we had done. had done in this section of the site. The other change, go back to the, back to the overall, is in the, with the area of the, the commercial cottages. We've labeled these as kind of the D block, these are the, the D buildings, D one, D two, D three, and D four, and again, we've made, made some, some minor changes to, to those buildings as a result of this plan. So, we presented a, trying something new again to, hopefully to make it easier to understand the changes that we're doing. We, we broke those changes, put them all on one sheet and submitted that, hopefully that all the changes could be, could be easy to understand in the context of the, of the entire site. And so what I have in front of you are the, this is the layout plan. Let me get that sheet up a little bit. Nope, I'm going to let me zoom there, sorry.
Yeah, thanks for doing that, because it's easier to see.
Trying to, trying to make it, make it cleaner. So in the layout plan, these, these four cottages, they were all originally 500 square feet, and then it was, well, we had a tenant and we wanted to make D four a little bigger, so it went to 500, 500, 500, 704 square feet. And then we, we kind of revisited this and looked at some of the aesthetics of this green and tenant needs notwithstanding, we went to a slightly different configuration where we have two 500 square foot buildings, and D one, by the way, is built. So 500 and 500 on the ends and 660 square feet for the two internal buildings. So we have a little more square footage there, we've, but we've made some symmetry there with, with each other in front of this, front of this proposed green. And then we had, again, have the bandstand in the corner, and it was originally a 12 by 12 structure. What I submitted to you was a 12 by 10 structure. We now want to make it a 10 by 10 structure as we started to do the design, and I can show you the architecture of that a little later, but.
Pretty soon we're going to be down to a solo artist.
Well, we, you know, we, 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 as we worked on the design, we, we really did, it wasn't an intent to make it smaller, it was an intent to make the, make the proportions right, and that's where we, where we ended up with the, as a, as a 10 by 10. So, and you can see the, the layout changes there from, on the plan. The grading and drainage, we didn't change the drainage, the grading gets tweaked around the sidewalks to make, make sure the A D A works, you know, this curbing is all in, so as we've established to finish four of these buildings, you know, so there's some by 10s, some of the sidewalks changed to make that, make that entire area accessible. And then, again, utilities, water is exactly as it was, sewer is exactly as it was, because some of the buildings moved a foot or two further away from the curb, the, the service lines got a foot longer, but there's no change in, in direction or flow or really anything. They're all forward serviced by, by a grease trap, they go into this communal, communal sampling manhole into the grease trap and then into the, to the, to the rest of the lines, the rest of the sewer collection line. So again, no, no substantive change in the utilities, just a minor lengthening of the service lines. Again, landscaping, we adjusted some trees, that's really the, probably the biggest thing that was, that was done on the landscape plan. And then lighting, we made some very minor adjustments to the, to some of the light poles on the side there, just again, for symmetry purposes as we, as we adjusted the buildings, we kept these lights midpoint between the two structures, again, to make the, make the whole thing work. So again, there, yes, there are changes, no, they're really not, not substantive in any manner. And again, just to reiterate on those fixtures, they all remain the same, the fixtures in this portion of the site are all the 14-foot lensed light structures, so. That's it, those are, right, those are, those are the, those are the changes as part of the site plan amendment.
All right, not too much. Eric?
Let's see, I think, staff, we, we got a single submittal, but we broke the submittal into two actions as indicated on your agenda, so I assume, Jeff, you're going to do a separate presentation on the Ortega lot?
That was the idea.
That's fine, that's fine. So the first item for the Sixth Amendment, there were a couple of minor comments, I guess I would ask Jeff, one of the comments was, we were, it was difficult to identify any changes that were bubbled on the plan in the vicinity of buildings A one to A two.
Oh, yes.
Could you maybe just address that?
The A one and A two changes. And this is down in this portion of the site. Why was this bubbled? Because we had added a lot line from the last time you saw it, there's now a lot line between buildings A one and A two, and that subdivision line was a change in the plan, so it got bubbled.
Thank you.
I did not describe that in my, in my cover letter.
Got it, okay. So there were a couple of minor items to address, which I think could be handled as conditions of approval. The board, we're recommending that the board waive the site plan hearing and proceed with a conditional approval, that's at the end of your recommendation, it's a separate recommendation for three A, items three A and three B. One clarification on staff comment number eight for Dutchess County Department of Health Review. We had a discussion with the applicant, they would like to get going with the buildings, and since there's already been a site plan approved for buildings D one through four, and these are amended modifications, staff would have no objection to if the site plan were completed prior to a certificate of occupancy of issuance, prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy on the D block buildings, rather than.
I'm sorry, you're talking about prior to a health department approval?
Yes.
Health department approval could be obtained prior to the C O rather than prior to the V P.
Yes.
I, I, my contention is that there's no health department approval required here. I mean, we can certainly submit to them, but there's nothing, there's, there's no change to review, I guess is why I, we had.
That's right, I mean, that was actually the, what we had talked about, was the, that rather than have health, even submitted it to the health department, that we would allow the plan to be signed because there's nothing changing in the infrastructure, so that was, yeah. That was actually what we had discussed.
Got it. Okay.
Okay.
So then you can take number eight off.
That's number, and it's number nine.
Sorry?
And it's number nine.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yep, got it. All right, thanks Eric. Let's go around for comments on the site plan. Anybody? Bob? Peter?
You created 17 new parking spaces, have you looked at snow storage for those spaces?
There is, you know, again, there is snow storage, there are snow storage areas on the, on the site. In, in this corner, we've got snow storage, you know, I guess the, the snow is going to fall on the parking spaces instead of on the, on the garages.
On the roof.
And then on the parking spaces, right, so there's, we think there's, you know, there's a little more snow, but, but it's not, wasn't significant for us to want to revisit it. I will say that the, we were challenged, because the first snowfall on this site was a big one, right, there was, we didn't, there was no, there was no, no learning curve for moving snow, so we did have a, whatever, first, a big test, as a first test, and now we're learning how to move the snow around on the site based on that.
Well, it's not that really insignificant, how, how big is a parking space?
Nine by 18.
Okay, so figure 180 times 20, that's like 3,000 square feet, that's not an insignificant.
I guess, it's 15 acres, but, okay. Yeah, right, it's.
So you think you have, you're going to move all that additional snow in that cor, into that corner?
Yes. And if there are issues, we'll move it into a different corner, and, and, you know, again, this is always a, it's always a problem with, with snow, you, 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 there's always could be a maximum of snow you can't accommodate, so then you have to lift it out and, and truck it and dump it in the, dump it somewhere else on site, so, you know, we, that's just, that's how these sites operate, because there isn't, there is never, never is there a site with an infinite amount of storage.
Would you say, how many parking spaces are there behind A and B total?
So it was string of 24.
22.
22, so 46.
Times 11. So figure 92. So you, it's, it's about a couple less. We're talking about a 20% increase in parking spaces roughly, give or take, so. Okay. I guess that's doable, you just have to pile it a little bit higher.
Right, that's, yes, yes, that's exactly right.
All right, thanks Peter.
I guess my other question, looking at, you know, the changes, I'm trying to remember where that flower garden was and why you're removing that.
Sure, so the, the flower garden was, was here, this is building one, which is, you know, L-shaped, again, three-story building, the one that's occupied. So there are gas meters there now, and we, we, you know, we had allotted for infrastructure, they had to be a little further away from the building than, than we'd hoped, so we ended, it got squeezed trying to, trying to, trying to realistically say that's going to be, it's going to be a flower garden.
Ran out of space.
Yeah, so we, 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 something that we want to keep on the site, we don't have a good location for it yet, it's something in our program, and when we, we get the right, the right spot for it, then we'll, we'll come back as we, as we build out. So I think it's, we think, and we think it's important, you know, this doesn't mean this area isn't, isn't, isn't landscaped, because it is, it's just not the flower garden.
Okay, that was my next question, is what you're doing with it instead, so.
Will your landscaping shield some of the gas meters?
Yes.
So there will be some, something.
Some shrubs or something.
Shrubs.
And, uh, we.
Yeah, I, I want to. There we go. So, you know, on this, this, this doesn't catch up with probably what's, what's been installed, because there were, there were more shrubs installed here than shown on the plan, I think, because it still shows what the, what the design was, but we did add some shrubs at the, at the subtle end, this, this, the actual landscape plan left that.
Because it was the.
Yeah.
Where's the height of those shrubs?
Generally, about three feet in that area, and I can, we can, we can have this updated with.
As long as there's some, my screen.
Yeah, yeah, nobody wants to.
Gas meters aren't really attractive.
They're, they're not. We couldn't say that when Russ Avery was on this board for years.
In my opinion, they're not attractive, and I have one, so I just, and I screened it.
I move that we waive the site plan public hearing for this project. Moved and seconded, called to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
I move that the planning board find that the action contemplated by the Eastdale Village Sixth amended site plan excluding addition of the Ortega House lot, correspondence and attachments as revised through November 25th, December 6th, 2019, is consistent with the secret finding statement for the McDonald Heights Town Center as adopted March 15th, 2018, and, and I move that the planning board grant conditional amended site plan approval for the Eastdale Village Sixth amended site plan excluding the addition of the Ortega House lot, subject to the following. Respond to the comments of all reviewing departments and agencies, said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness, including but not limited to the following items one through eight, 10, and 11.
Second. Move and seconded, called to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
And item 11 was?
Well, item nine was that we removed the health department requirement, so.
11 is the standard, just standard conditions.
Jeff, page five. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
I'm looking at the comments, not the resolution, thank you.
Yes, 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 got it, okay. Okay, all right.
And do you have any architecture to show of these?
Yes, you know how they know it's Christmas? They're letting me play architect tonight, so.
Wow.
No, and I, I.
He went fishing.
Did see some.
For live here, I say that in all jest, Giovanni, who's, as you know, has, 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 you know, poured much of his design experience into this project, which is he could be here tonight, he couldn't, so he and I spent some time together talking about the, talking about the, the project and, and on this presentation, so give me just a second here.
So I want to talk first for a second about buildings one, D one and D four, again, on the, on the two ends. This is, this is the rendering that was approved by the board in, I believe it was February, I have the resolution, but a, but the board, the board approved the, the siding for, for, for D one, the siding and roofing for D one. We now want to make, make D one and D four look the same, and then the middle two, D two and D three, look the same. So the, the siding, they're going to, the combination of, of, of lap siding and then the, the shakes across the front was originally a little browner, and now we want to go to the hearty deep ocean for the, for the siding and the shake, and then the black architectural shingles. So this is the, this is the color that's proposed for those, for those materials. Again, the same shingles that were previously approved, the, the black, they'll be the same, but we're going with the, want to go with a darker color on the, on the building. And then the, the lower part, that's not the, not the shake and not the, not the siding, will be the Arctic white. Again, that, that doesn't change, that's what was originally approved, the Arctic white on those, on those structures.
Anyone have any comments on the architecture?
No, let's go. And then the, the two center structures on this, on the single sheet, again, providing a little, a little differentiation between the buildings, you can see the, this, this has a little different gable in the, in the rear of the, of the building, it's got a board and batten siding instead of the, instead of the shakes and the, and the lap siding. And the color is going to be all Arctic white, again, the same, these are all hardy products, the same Arctic white on the, on the building. Windows will be black instead of, instead of white on the, on the, on the two-end cottages, and then the roof will be the Galvelume, the, the 5V metal roof. It's the same metal roof that, that we, that we use, and you approved on the, on the male building, again, to, to provide the, the context, it'll have this, the same roof as approved here, will be on, on those buildings. Those will be, again, white with the, with the black windows and the, the Galvelume roofing.
It's just a different roofing material than the other.
I'm sorry, say again?
Different roofing material than the other.
Different roofing material, yes, yes, but, but again, one has already been used on the, on the site here.
Anyone have comments on that? It's sizzle and steak.
Is that, is that good? Thank you. And then finally, we have the, the, our, our bandstand. And again, the same, the same roof that's proposed, the Galvalume metal roof. And all of the materials will be white, the Arctic white, the same, same material you've seen. All the soffit and trim, and the columns will all be clad in the, in the Hardy Arctic white materials. Again, from proportionality, that's why we went, we went to a, a ten by ten structure with these columns. To get some of a more traditional vernacular design in the, in the site here.
All right. What, any other comments on that one, guys? All right, I move we accept architecture as presented.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Called to questions, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Looking good. Now we can discuss. Item two, declaration of lead agency intent seeker amended site plan review for a proposed Ortega Lot, Takehouse Lot at nine forty-nine Duchess Turnpike for addition to the Eastdale Village project. Welcome back.
It's a long, I forgot my password. Um, the, so, the, we've been talking about.
All right, so you can see the, the overall, the overall west side of the site. And the Ortega Lot is smack in the middle of it, right here. We were fortunate enough to be able to guard the lot, unfortunant enough to require the lot after much of the design work was completed. So we've been spending the last few months trying to understand the best, the best use for this site in the context of the, of the project. And we're still not there. However, in, in many conversations with you, we, we started to recognize that, that there is some integration that's going to go on between the house and the lot and the, and the, and the project. We have, we have a pedestrian, temporary pedestrian access that comes up the driveway. There was a brief period of time where this was our leasing office. It's now fully open to the end of the site. And, and so recognizing the, some of the reality status, we're going to want to incorporate this site into the overall plan, we thought we would start the secret review of the, of integrating this lot in the Eastdale Village. Although we've done a lot of, a lot of site plan amendments, what we, what we have not talked to you about is, is really kind of expanding the, what the boundaries of Eastdale Village are. And, and not that there can be a lot of them, because the, the, you know, the zone only goes so far. And, you know, it's, it's not, this is not the first of, of many. But, but there could be a couple of houses that could end up in the zone here. Obviously, this is one, and, and the Frank House is one. And, and, you know, so how do we go through that process? We, we, this is something that, that we need to kind of work through with the board and staff themselves about how to address under the existing seeker, the incorporating this house into the overall Eastdale Village project. Actually, we might come over here to just start that process.
All right. Eric?
Yeah, that, that's a good app description. So staff has recommended that the planning board recirculate, declare its intent to be lead agency and circulate.
Great, thanks.
And then to defer further action on the application. We've also requested updating the application a bit for the next round.
All right. Let's go around the board for comments. Rocco?
Nothing at this time.
Bob?
Your Takehouse have some kind of historic designation?
It doesn't have an historic designation. The, the state of New York did determine to be eligible for listing on the national register. And so as the, to do any disturbance on the site, this will, you know, we get to show us kind of the maximum impact, and they would review the, those findings before we could do anything. So we started that process with them. And so the, the, you know, what, the, the most impact we would have is we move the house somewhere else on the site and, and, and construct, you know, something here. You know, we gave them, we gave them the schematic plan, it showed ability to park. That's not the plan that we want to do. We wanted, we had to show them something that would show an impact area, so we could go down the, go down the path of, well, if that's the impact area, what do you, what do we have to study to determine what are the, what are the cultural resources? What are the potential impacts of those resources? What's the mitigation? So we went down that path. And so we've, we've completed a phase one, two, and three cultural resource investigations. I actually got the, the field letter just yesterday from our consultant for getting the, the field investigations. That, that, the whole data recovery plan. But if it's submitted to the, to the state, we have to do, what's called the HABs, our documentation of the stored, some of the building structure, study of the, of the building. So we have measurements and photographs of the building, so there's a historical record of that, of that structure. So those, those then get recorded in the state's base and the, and the files. And that's the, that, that whole process is available for a restored house and sort of inside. This is eighteen twenties, I think, farm, it's all, it's all been part of the, this whole farm going on.
Two hundred years old.
Is it, so have you looked at what it takes to successfully move that building someplace else? I'm just curious of how you do it for a building that old.
Right. The, you know, and, and in talking to, I've talked to, to, to several house movers, this is not of order, that the little houses get moved and, and they're moved with, with care. The, the big question, well, you can see here, this is a step ladder in the, in the back here, and these two additions on. Is there, are you going to, are you going to take those additions with you? Are you going to leave those additions? That, that was made it harder for them to take the additions, depending on how it was built and whether they were kind of added on, recent add-ons. So it turned out this last little addition is, is probably not worth moving, and it's not historic. But the, the basement runs under the, it's under, under this section also. We'll probably move, you know, this, this rectangle with this, this addition here. And again, may or may not move that section, because again, it's, it's, it's age and nature that they have, that exists. But they, they, you know, they go in and they, they run steel through the, through the, through the basement. They jack it up, trundle it across the road, where we're, we're talking about looking at, across the road. We dig the foundation out before they get there, ramp it down, they put the house in there. And then you build the pillars up to the foundation. And they don't, they first build up to it, and then they, they take it down the last, eventually it's onto that, on the foundation. So it's, you know, they were, they had answered your question so many times. It was, it was, it was kind of, you know, it was all news to me about how it was done. But clearly, it was, it was something that got, that just confirmed. Really something that they, they had before. And this was, this was their own challenge, but this wasn't a challenge. Usually, they're, they're, they're something they take down, they're careful. Usually, they have to fight taking down, you know, open lines and bridges or whatever.
Okay, thanks. Good job. All right. Ben? Peter?
Is this Zone MHTC?
It is, yes. The MHTC is all, it says here, and I'm going to, I can, I can.
No, no, this, the answer is right. Thank you.
All right. Just looking at the addition there. Looks nice. All right. My question, my only thing was historic status as well, so it sounds like you got that covered. So go ahead.
I move that the planning board declare its intent to continue to be lead agency to coordinate the environmental review of the proposed type one action as amended to incorporate the Ortega House Lot, nine forty-nine Duchess Turnpike, zero point seven one one acre into Eastdale Village project, and authorize the planning department to circulate a notice of said intent and a copy of the proposed amended site plan and secret evaluation and other materials to the involved agencies.
Second. Moved in seconded for lead agency. Called to questions, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
I move that the planning board defer further action on the amended site plan pending re-establishment of the lead agency and direct the applicant to respond to comments of the planning board and those received from the town departments and agencies, including but not limited to the following. Respond to the comments of all reviewing agencies, departments, and agencies. Said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness, including but not limited to the following items, one through ten.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Called to questions, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. All right.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Well, there is, yeah.
We'll save you a chair, chair for next month.
Yeah, so the Hudson Heritage.
Next up on, yep.
Project was next on the agenda. They, they had asked this afternoon to, to be removed from the agenda, because they, they intend to be back in January. And so they thought they would address their, you know, this issue, and then the, a new application that they're going to have for us in, in January at the same time. I mean, we did, we, we do think it would be appropriate to respond to the town board's notice to be lead agency. So we could do that tonight. And then if you wanted to, we could discuss any of the zoning amendments, but we could also just wait until next month and do it then.
If there's any concerns, I guess. Does anyone have any concerns with some of the zoning amendments that you looked at? I, I personally thought there should be some additional restrictions on some of them, but. Let's go around the board quick. Peter?
I think it would be, it wouldn't hurt to take some time to give it some thought.
Yep. I mean, we're just starting to look at them, so. Anyone else have any comments on it right now? No. All right, some of them were, seemed, removing a lot, removing all the restrictions seemed a little too much in some places, but I think we have to understand from the applicant what his intents are for some of these things. All right. Let's just move forward with the, the consent.
I move that the planning board consent to the designation of the town board as lead agency for coordinated secret review of the actions in the October thirty-one, twenty nineteen application by EFG Saber to the town board.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Called to questions, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. We'll deal with that coming up. And next on, last on the agenda is Stratford Farms Townhouse time extension. I move that the planning board grant two ninety-day time extensions of site plan approval and final major subdivision approval from January twenty-third, twenty twenty, forward to July twenty-first, twenty twenty.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Called to questions, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Any other business before the board tonight? I move we terminate the meeting.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Called to questions, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Great holidays, everybody. Happy New Year. We'll see you.
Yep.
On the flip side.